Okay, great. Good evening and welcome to our June 27, 2023 Select Board Meeting. This meeting is being taped via Whitman Hansen Community Access Television. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, well, I'm so excited about the swearing-in, Mrs. Rain. I almost forgot to ask you to read our public announcement.
I can't have that. We are looking for citizens at large to become members of the following committees: The Bylaw Committee, Cable and Internet Committee, Capital Improvement Committee, Community Preservation Committee, Cultural Council, Energy Committee, Historical Commission, McQuann Property Reuse Committee, Nathaniel Thomas Mill Committee, Parks and Fields, and the Recreation Committee. Youth volunteer applications may be found on the town's website, www.hansen-ma.gov, or by calling the Select Board's office at 781-293-2131. The town's clerk's office will be closed all day on Thursday, June 22, 2023, and Wednesday, June 28. Please plan accordingly. The town clerk announces summer hours during the month of July and August. The town clerk's office will be closed all day on Fridays. Please plan accordingly. Upcoming meetings: Select Board, July 11, 2023; Select Board, July 25, 2023.
Excellent. So first up on our agenda is some very exciting business, which is the swearing-in for Lieutenant Tyler Bryant and swearing-in for Lieutenant Thomas White. And Chief O'Brien, I will hand it over to you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sure. So start with Lieutenant Bryant. So to start, Lieutenant Bryant was actually an intern when he was in high school.
He was in 2008?
No, no worries. So in 2008, he actually interned at the fire department with us when he was in high school. Right after high school, he went to Halifax as a firefighter paramedic and spent four years there from 2010 to 2014. In 2014, we sold him away from Halifax. And then in February, with the retirement of Lieutenant Osmond, Tyler Bryant is promoted to lieutenant. A couple of things about Tyler, he serves as the fireman mechanic, so when you start seeing bills for the big mechanics, we're going to blame him for it. But all kidding aside, Tyler actually just earned his associate's degree in fire science administration. He is incredibly talented when it comes to hazardous materials and hazmat stuff. He deals with all about four gas meters, and we've got a plethora of them that have to own all the apparatus. So every month, Tyler's up collecting them all, making sure they're calibrated, documenting everything with it because it gets into all kinds of legal stuff and things like that for it. So a little bit of personal note on it, Tyler honestly is always there to help people out. So he really is. He's helped me immensely with the transition. He's done an excellent job. He and his shift, what he's done with his shift is absolutely incredible in show-up period time training-wise, as all the lieutenants have. Tonight, Tyler is going to be pinned by his fiancee Christina and his children Cameron and Kayden. But before that, let me have Town Clerk Beth Sloan come on and swear him in.
Yes.
Lieutenant Tyler Bryant, solemnly swearing, chivalically and concrually, just trying to perform, for the reasons common upon you, as fire lieutenant, to the best of your abilities and in accordance with the bylaws of town, and the laws for common.
I do. Thank you. Christina? You can't hurt kids. You gotta help.
Go ahead.
It's not a break, yeah.
Do you want to do it?
Yeah, go buddy. It's already all settled out.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Can Tyler come say your name?
Yes.
There it is. Makes it all official. All right, and next up, we have Lieutenant Thomas White, TJ, as we like to call him. Come on, buddy. So TJ graduated from Whitman Hansen in 2008. I still remember a previous administrative system, Bob Murphy talking about, can't get this kid, he's in the military, he's a firefighter in the military, he really wants to get in the fire department. He grew up in town. So with that, currently Lieutenant White is a member of the United States Army Reserve. He's with the 468th Engineering Detachment. In 2020 to 2021, he was in the Middle East as part of operations, side and shield. And then he came back from that in June of 2015 with the promotions that went on in the department. I'm sorry, in 2015, he was hired as a qualified fighter. In 2018, he was hired as a full-time firefighter, paramedic. And then April, he was promoted lieutenant with the promotions that went on in the department. TJ is a fire prevention lieutenant, as you guys are all aware. He has hit the ground running. There's quite a few changes that became a deputy, are starting to put together for tracking, fire prevention things that go on in town, to help us out with it. On a personal note, thank you from my family, my son was deployed. It's happening every time we talk to him. He was deployed with the infantry, to the same operation that TJ was at, about a year after TJ was. So TJ was able to sit him down and work him through everything ahead of time. That just goes to the type of person TJ is. Even with Christopher Home now, he's like, he has all the paperwork and things he needs to get done, things he can do for the military, things like that, because Christopher is 19, so. So tonight TJ will be pinned by his mother, Susan White. First, we'll have Beth swear him in.
Lieutenant Thomas White, solemnly swearing, chivalically and concrually, just trying to perform, for the reasons common upon you, as fire lieutenant, to the best of your abilities and in accordance with the bylaws of town, and the laws for common.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. White, yes. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. TJ.
And Chief, well, we thank you, and we thank all of you guys for stepping up. I know the transition's been a little tricky, as transitions always are, but we appreciate everything you guys are doing to make it happen and everything you do every day. So thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
We can take a brief recess, and we won't take it personally if you all want to leave while we're doing that recess.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Okay, welcome back to our June 27 Select Board Meeting. We've just finished the swearing-in of Lieutenant Tyler Bryant and Lieutenant Thomas White. And now we're going to move on to the remainder of our agenda. We've got several appointments. Appoint Laura Solanga as a member of the Conservation Commission for a three-year term. And I assume this is Ms. Solanga sitting next to you, Mr. Clemens?
She's a candidate for associate member.
Okay, then let's make sure the agenda said full member. Okay, associate member. Okay, did anybody have any questions for Ms. Solanga? Usually, I'm surprised you're slacking on your questions. You ask every candidate that we're going to appoint.
I didn't know if we were going to do an introduction or anything. Did you want to ask her?
Yeah, did you want to tell us a little bit? Did you want to tell us a little bit about yourself? Where, yeah, did you want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
So I went to school at Whitman Hansen, and I've been a resident for many, many years, although I left the country for many years as well. I've been back here for over 10. I walk almost daily in the border of property by my home, and I have three children. So I care deeply about the planet, and I'm interested in learning and helping. I know, actually, I went to school with Sarah Clemensville's daughter and learned that he was on the conservation board last year when I went through a process to get approved for a water mine. I just, again, interested in helping and learning and for the planet.
Okay, great. Well, the beauty of this associate membership, which is, you know, kind of in its infancy stage, is that it's a feeder for future generations of conservation commissioners. So you sound like your heart is in the right place, which is awesome. Did anybody have any questions?
Is there anything on here that related to conflicts that you would want to bring up that you haven't listed on here that we should be aware of?
I mean, I have protected land as part of my property, so I suppose that could be a conflict if I wanted to do something with that land.
That's good.
Well, just, you'll have to, you know, once you get sworn in, Beth will give you the ethics training that you need to take, and that will all explain that you should recuse yourself, et cetera, et cetera, and there's protocol for that. So half the battle is being aware and not acting on the conflict, so that sounds great. So did anybody have any other questions? Okay, without any further questions or discussion, I will entertain a motion to appoint Laura Solanga as an associate member of the Conservation Commission for a three-year term.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, great. And that brings us to appoint Christopher Costello.
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you, thank you, Ms. Solanga.
You'll receive a letter from?
Yes, yes, so you'll receive a letter from our office, and then you'll be sworn in by Beth Sloan as an associate member, and then you can, if you need to, participate in the meetings. But until all of that happens, you can't really deliberate, you can't take a vote, you wouldn't be a voting member. And I know as an associate, the likelihood would be there might be a while, but just in the event that something should come up, that's, so we thank you for stepping up. We appreciate it. Thank you. All right, we've got appoint Christopher Costello as a full member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. As you will recall, and I don't think Mr. Costello's with us, I regret not bringing my glasses tonight, I can see that's going to be a challenge, but Mr. Costello, as you will recall, was fairly recently appointed to replace some departing members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and he's been in an associate position, but with the resignation of Joan Menudie as a full-time, full member, the board needs another member. So he has applied to be that full member, and that will give us the full three members that we need on the Zoning Board of Appeals. So I will entertain a motion to appoint Christopher Costello as a full member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, great. Mr. George, did you, did you vote on that?
Aye.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to, okay, so that was unanimous vote. Okay, appoint Alexander Stewart as a full member of the Recreation Committee for a three-year term. Now, we, some of us know and love Alex for, you know, his participation in many things, including the 200th Anniversary Committee. I want to clarify that this is a recreation committee. It is not the Recreation Commission. It is a committee that is, that we put together that's going to decide what we're going to do. Are we going to form a recreation commission? Are we going to hire somebody? What kind of programming do we want? How do we do that? What the membership of the commission should be if we decide to go in that direction? So I just want to clarify, because we've had a few questions, but the vote that we took was very clear that it was a recreation committee that we were forming, not a commission. So with that backstory and a little bit of information, did anybody have any questions on that? Okay. Did anybody want to ask Alex any questions?
Something to ask everybody. Anything that, any conflicts or anything that you think that would be worthwhile bringing up?
None off the top of my head, but any that do pop up, I'll make sure to address directly, and I'm eagerly awaiting to do the ethics training with Beth Sloan. Like, I consider myself a bit of a nerd, it sounds dirty, but like, I do enjoy, find that to be an interesting part of the experience.
And I'm sure she has literally never heard that from anybody, so she will look forward to dealing with you. That's awesome. And she, just to be clear, she doesn't do the training, but she'll get, provide you the information on it and all that, yeah. All right, so I will entertain a motion to appoint.
I have a question. Somebody wanted me to ask you a question. It was why we were.
Ask me a question?
Well, just ask the question.
Okay.
Why we're appointing someone to a three-year term to a recreation committee, which is only a temporary, and whose purpose is to see if we need a permanent recreation commission?
We could certainly appoint them for a one-year term. I mean, it's up to the board if you want to do that for a one-year term, and then, you know, we'll revisit it in a year.
Can I say that I think that you very clearly explained what that, what the purpose of that all is, and it really shouldn't be questioned?
Okay. I mean, how do people feel about it? Three-year, one-year?
We don't have a commission yet.
No, we don't have a commission.
We're in the planning stages of forming a commission.
Right.
We need a committee, I guess. We need committees for everything, but we need a committee to form the commission.
Right.
Hopefully, the committee will be less than a year.
I don't know how long it will take, but we can appoint for one year and then reappoint in another year if we find that they haven't, you know, if there hasn't been critical, you know, milestones resolved. I wish I didn't have to say this, but the pace of municipal government moves at a glacial pace. So I wish I could say it's beyond the pale to think that we wouldn't have achieved anything in a year, but I know otherwise, so.
If we do it the other way, and we do it as it says to, for a three-year term, and if we do not need the committee for a three-year term, we just disband it.
If we disband the committee, then he's not serving, he can't serve on a non-existent committee.
Right. I suggest we leave it as, personally, I suggest we leave it as is, and then he's there until the three, whatever comes first.
For three years or until the committee is disbanded, whichever is the lesser?
That's my suggestion.
Okay, that actually makes an abundance of sense to me. Did anybody else have any deep thoughts on this? Okay, then I, it sounds as though the majority of the board is kind of leaning towards a three-year term. So I will entertain a motion to appoint Alex Stewart as a full member of the Recreation Committee for a three-year term.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Okay, great. Thanks for stepping up, Alex. Sorry about that little controversy, but.
Okay, I was, like, when you made the clarification, the first thing I thought was, okay, was there a clerical error that I made?
No, no, you did not make, no, no, you did not do anything wrong. Nobody did anything wrong, it's just, yeah, we're good.
I'm looking to, sorry, hang on.
All right, well, now we need to get more members, so get out there on campus, okay?
Congratulations.
Thank you. All right. Appoint Percy Child as the Adult and Youth Services Support Librarian. Ms. Green?
Yes, so the library had posted this position in-house in accordance with the union contract, and they did not get any candidates. The library then posted outside, which they did get candidates, and after an interview process, the director has requested that Percy Child be appointed to the position.
Okay. Anybody got any questions from Ms. Green? All right, saying none, I will entertain a motion to appoint Percy Child as the Adult and Youth Services Support Librarian.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. And I have to say, that's an amazing name, I love it. Accept Jane Duranty's resignation from the Council on Aging. Now, I will say that Jane has been very active in the Hansen Council on Aging for years, and of course, we all, always, nearly always regret when people resign, and in particular, I think we regret that Jane is resigning. But with that said, I will accept a motion to accept Jane Duranty's resignation from Hansen Council on Aging.
So moved with regret.
Second with regrets.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. All right. Then appoint June Sullivan as a member of the Hansen Council on Aging for a one-year term. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, appoint James Hickey as a member of the Hansen Council on Aging for a two-year term.
Is he finally old enough?
I, I.
I have to say.
He's been, he's been there since, I don't, well before he was, yeah. I will entertain that motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right, great, good to see him getting back into service. And then appoint Christian McCallum as Camp Kiwani lifeguard.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, great. Appoint Benjamin Sheehan as Camp Kiwani lifeguard.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? And I might just add, good work by the Camp Kiwani Commission on getting the beach open, on getting all these folks hired. It's been amazing, and we see you, we appreciate the work you're doing. Okay, with that, Chief O'Brien, do you mind if I just take things a little bit out of order and do, okay, great.
Absolutely.
All right, so we have Alden Way Street Acceptance Update, and I see some folks from Alden Way. As you recall, at our last town meeting in May, which seemed so long ago, we voted to, the town voted to accept Alden Way and the other streets around at Green Stringer as public, public ways, and they are public ways, so that has happened. But in the, taking that next step to doing the takings that we need to do in order to make sure that we've got access to those properties to do the things that we would need to do as a public way, we've run into some technical difficulties. Jane, are you able to articulate what those are?
Sure. Jane Madara Strueman from the town of Acosta. I believe that some things I've spoken to my colleague, Vederov, and the vote that was taken at the spring town meeting did not reference one or more of the correct plans. So, and we're not, I'm not sure if the layout vote of the Select Board.
No, that, none of, so the hearing and our layout vote did not know that there was an amendment to that plan, and so, and the petition was a citizen's petition, and that did not take it into consideration. So this is a technicality.
Yes.
And, and it's a technicality that we intend as a board to correct at the next town meeting, but we have to put it back before town meeting. We cannot unilaterally decide to do that. Anything having to do with public ways or takings or any of that, all has to be decided as it should by town meeting, by, by, you know, the body. So I think Ms. Federov had just asked that we sort of, I guess, indicate that we're aware of what the issue is, which is that there's a technical issue there, and that we intend to place, as a selectman's article, not a citizen's petition, on the October town meeting warrant, an article to correct the technicality.
Yes, and the reason that you want to make sure that it's correct is that you don't want to get several years down the line and find that there's a surveyor going out to survey something, and what is on the ground is not in the layout that was approved by the town and recorded. So it's, it's good that the, the missing plan was noticed right away and can be corrected promptly.
I'm a little confused. We were all at their June 7 meeting, and she made it pretty clear, for those of us that were there, that the revisions to Gray and Stringer that are in question were already taken care of, and there was no reason to take any kind of land from anybody because those were done as gold. Is that the case that you've been told?
My understanding is that what was approved is not exactly where the road is. There was a modification.
She made it pretty clear, was that modification done? Am I missing something?
No, no, your plans are fine, but what isn't fine is the article that was presented to town meeting. What we, what we accepted were the old plans before those changes were made. So town meeting voted and said, we're fine with those, those plans before the changes were made because it was a citizen's petition. So we just, you know, we, we didn't vet it because it wasn't our article, and it was, and you really can't change a citizen's petition. So we presented it as it was, and then as the law firm got into trying to figure out what needed to be taken from each of the respective homeowners along the line, we figured out that the lines of demarcation were different than what had been voted on at town meeting. So your, your deeds are, like, where you guys are at, that.
What do you mean by where you guys?
So your deeds, your, your plot plans, whatever, those are, those are all accurate. What is not accurate is the article that we voted on at town meeting, and what would.
It didn't refer to the revisions.
Correct.
What I understand.
Correct.
But I was also told that those revisions were done.
Yes.
There'd be no land taking, it was just a matter of getting the revisions into the article.
That this has all been about land taking. In order to make this road public, there has to be land taking.
Excuse me, could I talk for a second too?
Yeah.
I am on Stringer, my use of Alden, Stringer and Gray. I was in at the June 7 meeting, but I've been, become best friends with the Plymouth Registry of Deeds due to this, you know, because I'm very confused. But I just want to talk really quickly, and my question is, absolutely, that I was totally understanding that the modifications of both of Gray and Stringer are done, that my deed and the Gray deed are incorrect. So that's something I'm going to deal with on my own because they do not reflect the 1998 revision. But when I asked them, the revision was recorded and approved in October of 1998 by the town Hanson. So what I'm confused about is, it's in Plan Book 41, correct, one is in Plan Book 40, but how did this all happen?
No, no, there's, there's two, there's two different things here. We're not saying the recordings are inaccurate, that's not.
No, not me either, because it's recording, but you're saying that it was a clerical issue, that the 1998 revision was left off, but how did it get left off of?
It wasn't reflected in your article. It wasn't reflected in your article. We voted your article the way that.
Sandy and I did the article, but we gathered the information from here. So that's what I'm confused, I'm just going to do.
Don't, I don't, all I know is that we're trying to fix it for you.
No, I totally understand.
So it's all, so that way it gets totally fixed, because if it's not fixed totally right now, it's going to come up again and again.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just like a divorce. I had a situation, and I had land and blah, 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 and it took a long time to straighten it out, and if it's not straightened out the right way the first time, it keeps revisiting 40 years later. Ask me how I know.
You are fully in agreement to recommend that?
Oh, yeah, that's what I just said.
Absolutely.
I started off by saying this board is going to try to recommend, is recommending, we're, we're, not just recommending, we're creating the article.
Yeah, as a board, if we present the article, we can also vet it prior to that to make sure that there are actually no more clerical errors, and it goes through the appropriate way. So you won't find yourself in a situation like this. When you do a citizen's petition, no matter how accurate it is, we don't vet it. So we find out after the fact if something happens. We're going to be presenting it as a board on your behalf to make sure it's done right, meaning that you'll also have the resources to make sure the wording is correct and all the research is done.
And I understand that needs a two-thirds vote?
It's, it's still, I think it still will.
And, yeah, because it's land.
So in a bad world, what happens if it doesn't get that vote? What happens?
I'd be surprised.
I guess that's a.
Well, I know, but we won't know.
No, I guess that's a possibility. Then I guess we'll have.
We're going to go through the same process.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll just have to keep, honestly, we'd have to keep bringing it back until it does.
And this time, we'll be recommending it.
Yeah.
From our, from the board, we'll be recommending it.
So the way the timeline works, we have to, we have to proactively say we want to do this, and that sets up the dominoes to make sure that at town meeting, they'll know we're already making the recommendation. We'll remind everybody that it was accepted, pretty much unanimously, if my memory is correct.
It was.
About that, and then we're going to say the reason why we're doing it as a board is to make sure that it, that everybody knows that we're endorsing this. So we're going to do everything we can to set it up. We know we can't predict the future, obviously, we don't know, but we're going to do everything we can to make sure that it goes the way it should have gone the first time, and we'll make that very clear leading up to that.
And I think we'll.
As a board, if we, if we present the article, we can also vet it prior to that to make sure that there are actually no more clerical errors and it goes through the appropriate way. So you won't find yourself in a situation like this. When you do a citizens petition, no matter how accurate it is, we don't vet it. So we find out after the fact if something happens. We're going to be presenting it as a board on your behalf to make sure it's done right, meaning that you'll also have the resources to make sure the wording is correct and all the research is done.
And I understand that needs a two-thirds vote?
It's, it's still, I think it still will.
And, yeah, because it's land.
So in a bad world, what happens if it doesn't get that vote? What happens?
I, I, I mean, I, I guess that's a-
Well, I know, but we won't know.
No, I guess that's a possibility. Uh, it, then I guess we'll have, uh-
We're going to go through the same process.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have, we'll just have to keep, honestly, we'd have to keep bringing it back until it does.
And this time we'll be recommending it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the way that-
From the board, we'll be recommending it.
I, I don't-
So the way the timeline works, we have to, we have to proactively say we want to do this and that sets up the dominoes to make sure that at town meeting, they'll know we're already making the recommendation. We'll remind everybody that it was accepted, pretty much unanimously, if my memory is correct.
It was.
About that. And then we're going to say the reason why we're doing it as a board is to make sure that it, that everybody knows that we're endorsing this. So we're going to do everything we can to set it up. We know we can't predict the future, obviously, we don't know, but we're going to do everything we can to make sure that it goes the way it should have gone the first time. And we'll make that very clear leading up to that.
And, and I think we'll, you know, at town meeting, we'll, we'll explain that it's actually a liability for the town not to have this pass because then we can't follow through on what town meeting voted to have us do at the, at the May town meeting. So I think the fact that it's coming from us, um, that we're going to explain, look, this is a liability. If we don't clean this little, you know, little piece up, then it's not going to be clean. And nobody wants this ambiguity around all of this. We want it to be clean and clear that the town's able to do what, you know, what we need to do on a public way. So I, I mean, look, I, we can never predict the outcome of town meeting. Oftentimes we go to town meeting thinking we know, thinking we know what the controversial article is going to be and it's completely something different. Um, so, um, you know, but this board has discussed it and, you know, I think you're hearing us tonight say that we're going to, we're planning on putting it in, um, to the warrant and, um, and, you know, driving it through. So, um, you know, barring anything wild happening, I, I don't think it's going to be a problem for it to pass. Yes, sir.
Excuse me, is the road going to be public now or after the-
It's already public.
It is a public road.
Yes, the, the town voted to make it public, it's public. Yep. Yep.
Well, we're on that subject. I, I have a question. Since it is considered public now, um, when will the fire department sign?
Um, Ms. Green?
Um, we, we can just ask Highway to go and take them down.
Could you, have you contacted the Highway Department to do that?
No, we have not.
Will you?
Yes. Yep, we can do that. Now that I know that it's, it's public now, we can have them take it down.
Okay, thanks so much.
Okay, um, any other, any other comments or questions? Okay. All right, well, again, you know, we'll get it back on track and, um, and thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, um, with that, we will move to the fire department update. Chief O'Brien.
Thank you very much. So I put together a PowerPoint format here just to help kind of move things along with my gift of gab. All right. Um, so basically what I'm going to present to the board tonight is, um, the last six months with the Hanson Fire Department, or basically since, um, January 2023. At seven o'clock this morning, we've done 1,008 calls. Um, that does not include anything to do with inspectional services, smoke detector inspections or anything like that. That's strictly 911 calls, a call for service. Out of that 1,008, approximately 18% of them, which is 168, on multiple runs at the same time. And to give you a good example of it, in the last 24 hours, it's happened twice where the crew was out on one call. It was a serious enough call on the first call that they could not break free to grab the second ambulance to go to the second call. Um, they ultimately get there with the engine, but a mutilated ambulance was brought in. Um, the first time they were able to cancel the mutilated ambulance. Um, the second time at about four o'clock this morning, the mutilated ambulance had to come into town because the first ambulance had to transport with three paramedics, uh, one driving and two in the back. And with that, ambulance one, ambulance one is the second ambulance out all the time. Um, that has responded to 107 runs in transports, um, in the last six months. And so we closely track how often multiple runs are coming in because it does a couple of things for us. We have, um, four firefighter paramedics for the initial run. After that, it could be two or it could be one, depending on what happened with the first call and if they need, need two paramedics in the back. Um, so that's why we track in our software system. Um, firefighter Heffernan just had the company put it on there that now through the software, we're able to track what a multiple run is. And we say multiple runs, it's, it's when we hit that second call. It has happened three times since January that we have gone as much as, uh, once was five calls deep, once was six calls deep, once was seven calls deep.
Wow.
So, yeah, and, and we're not the only firefighter paramedic feeling this. It seems like we could be quiet for four hours and then the floodgates open up. Um, so just to give you a, an idea on some of that. Um, our staffing, like I was talking about, is one lieutenant and three firefighter paramedics per shift. We have had one long-term illness, he's been using his own sick time. Um, he should be back in early July. Our two new hires, um, that were actually here tonight also, they report to the academy in September. One of them had firefighting experience. We got her from, um, Halifax, so when she should, she completed her two weeks of orientation, she was able to go right to shift. The second gentleman that we hired, incredibly talented paramedic, but he's got no fire experience. So I actually sat with the, uh, command staff and with the union and we came up with a creative solution to get him on board so we didn't lose him anywhere. And what we did is we put him on staff, uh, Monday through Thursdays from seven to 5:30. And that's during the day, um, which is, when we look at it, different times of year, the days of the peak time, sometimes it's nighttime, it's peak. But we've done that, so he's always on the first ambulance out the door. But it's also working with five people on the shift. And the reason why we all wanted to, uh, do that is eventually we're going to have to look at staffing, which I'll talk about in a couple of minutes. And it would be going to five on a shift. And what that does is it allows us when multiple medicals are going on and both ambulances leave town, that the lieutenant's always in town. So at least there's always somebody in town that can either respond to calls, bring the usual aid in, handle larger incidents and things like that. Um, and it's been, it has actually been very well received. Um, one thing I'm asking everybody to do is think outside the box and let's throw it against the wall and what sticks works and whatever doesn't, okay, we go back to the way we've been doing it. And it's, I got to tell you, the, the guys and gals have been phenomenal. The firefighters and lieutenants have been excellent, um, with all kinds of different creative ideas and things like that that we're trying out with it. So, um, with staffing, there is a safer grant that's out there, um, and it's under the assistance of firefighter grants. It's been in existence for a long time and, uh, with Chief Thompson, we looked at it multiple times and talked to FinCom and other people about it. The nice part with it, the grant covers 100% for anybody that we hire for the first three years. It covers their medical insurance, it covers all their colers, anything like that. It doesn't cover any overtime costs, but the end of three years, then the town's 100% responsible for it. Um, and if you, if we were to hire four people and I'm going with high numbers, you know, throw health insurance and everything in, you're probably looking at $100,000 a firefighter. Um, you know, rough numbers on it. Um, so when I put that out there, because even if the next time the grant will open up is probably next March or April, even if we were to be awarded it, it's probably six to nine months before you're awarded it, then you go through the process. So even if we applied for it in the next, within the, the next year, it'll be two years before we actually get everybody on shift and start doing it. So then you're looking, add three years to it, it's really five years from now before we've got to figure out how to pay for it, whether it's an ambulance account, taxation, you know, things like that. So that is something that, um, I want to work with this board on to start looking at. Um, and also with FinCom and things like that, because the whole big thing is if it's not going to be sustainable, then obviously we can't do it. Um, the safer grant's phenomenal for the three years, but we have to look further down the line with that.
And so Chief O'Brien, um, uh, where, um, we, um, have got money to do a five-year strategic planning, financial planning, this is definitely going to be something we're going to want to think about because although there'll be grant money, the training wheels come off at some point and the town's going to need to pick that up. And so we're going to want to build that in. Um, but, you know, and I, I think to the extent you think that you're going to need to increase staff, then we want to have that conversation.
Absolutely.
You know, what are the metrics around that and, and, you know, what does that look like?
Yep, absolutely.
So.
Absolutely. Um, just a few things looking ahead for October town meeting. Um, in the May town meeting, one of our articles, um, and I apologize because I didn't catch it, nobody caught it until after the fact. It's supposed to be fiscal year '24 for the, um, overtime for two staff while our new recruits are in the academy. It got labeled as fiscal year '23 in the motion. So get voted on this year. It's not a big deal, Lisa and I have already talked to FinCom and things like that. It's a simple fix because the money went into the budget, it's just going to come back out and they'll move it all of a su-
So that's on October?
Yeah, it'll be for October, so that's strictly just a, a procedural piece like you were talking about earlier. Uh, we're looking right now to go to October town meeting and, um, go through, um, capital improvements in, in obviously this board to take $390,000 from the ambulance account to replace ambulance one. Ambulance one is a 2013. Um, it'll take, on the short end, 18 months to get a new one from the time that we place the order. It could take as long as two years to do it. So at that point, ambulance one is 15 years old and still on the road as a firefighting piece. What happens though is once that ambulance comes offline as being a ambulance, it actually stays in our fleet and is used for all of our specialty equipment, the dive gear, ice rescue equipment, things like that. So we actually keep ambulances for 20 years, even a little bit longer. Um, so that's what we'll be looking at for it. The nice part with the 390 is we don't, it isn't like it's going to come out November 1st or anything if town meeting approves it. It could be, again, a year or more before that 390 would come out of the ambulance account for it. Um, just giving you an update on Tower One. So Tower One is a 1995. Um, through federal grant money, we know that the last two years, it has made it to the very end and then been, been denied. We're going to see where it falls this year because the further along it goes and also the older it gets, the more likely it is that the federal government will give us some grant money towards it. They'll give us up to $1 million. Um, right now, and I hate saying it, the price tag on a new tower truck right now is somewhere between 1.7, 1.8 million dollars. And that's to buy one, basically no thrills and we literally, I'll, I'll call it buy it off the showroom floor. Um, talking with other chiefs and, and a lot of mechanics and Lieutenant Brian, who you met tonight, talking with a lot of the mechanics and stuff, a lot of departments are getting away from custom ordering big pieces like that. Um, and when we sat with E1, who does a lot of our engines, basically we took our '95 tower truck, we actually downgraded a couple of things on it to build what we want and they're like, "Yeah, basically it's a, it's a lot piece," is the best way to, to put it. Um, so we're, we're still looking at that. Uh, our engine one, which is the 2013 E1, that is out of service. It's been out of service for a few weeks now. Um, it's got an engine, engine issue going on. We're not sure if it is an EGR valve for it or if it is a, um, head gasket issue for it. I've been working very closely with, uh, Ms. Green, uh, the town accountant and the, uh, FinCom on it to come up with creative ways to do it so that, so that we think we can use some money that's going to be left over this year to encumber to be able to pay for it and things like that. Because what we're trying to avoid is trying to avoid doing a reserve fund transfer that if they are able to fix this all the summer, that we're not stealing the reserve fund transfer that we've got other ways in which to be able to fund it. Um, and I got to tell you, everybody's been excellent with, when I've thrown out some ideas on it, they're like, "Oh, yeah, we can do this and we can do this also." So it's actually been phenomenal experience with it. But that could be out of service another couple of months because there is a national backorder on one of the major parts that we need so that they can, I guess, pressure test the motor for it. So, um, one thing I'll be asking for, it'll probably be about roughly $500, is we've got an emergency management line that we have, uh, $5,000 far from town meeting about a year or so ago, and I think it was for the library senior center, we opened a cooling, I'll call it a cooling center, uh, but left the library open longer hours when it was hot out. That just didn't get replenished. Again, not a big deal for any of that. Uh, under emergency management also, uh, a comprehensive emergency management plan has been completed and updated, uh, all parties, uh, which is basically all the department heads, uh, the chair of the board, a selectman, everybody will hopefully sign off on it this month. Um, it is a live document, so it can be changed at any point in time and we track when it's done. Um, I can actually email that to everybody on the board, if everybody would like it.
I was just going to ask, is there any way you could share that?
Yep, yep, I'll email it to everybody because it's kind of fixed, so that will, it'll make it easier for everybody so I can email that to everybody. Medical Reserve Corps, uh, we went to, the deputy and I, uh, last Wednesday night, went to a dinner that they did, um, in Duxbury. And what the Medical Reserve Corps is, it's volunteers of nurses, doctors and just other volunteers that they do a lot with shelter. And we actually have one, two, there's at least three or four people from Hanson, um, that were there uh, Wednesday night. Um, we had some great conversations with them and that is something that, we've got some shelter equipment. Um, we've gotten stuff through grants in the past, but we've never really exercised it. Um, because the one thing I will say with Hanson and Hanson residents, especially the elderly, they, um, when it comes to long-term power outages and things like that, we work very closely with Mary Collins, um, and Deputy Barron's, when he was doing all the safe and senior safe stuff, we get the phone numbers and everything for the seniors. We reach out to them, "Do you need anything? Nope, we're good." They're okay not leaving their homes, which was actually pretty funny. But it could absolutely happen that we either have to open up a shelter here or working with a regional shelter. Um, so that's something that we're going to start working, uh, with them on to create the, the shelter plan for that. Um, we'll be, hopefully in, uh, early July, I'll meet with the, uh, library director, senior center director, just to make sure they're still on board with things they've done in the past. And we'll be meeting with the school district because right now the high school, um, and the high school staff is who handles that right now. Citizens Emergency Response Team, which is the CERT team, uh, Whitman has a very good one. Um, they function as a rehab team in a lot of fires, which is excellent. There are some Hanson residents on that. Um, the Whitman Fire Chief and I have spoken about it as well as the, uh, CERT director. Um, and we're going to look to regionalize that. That way there is more grant opportunity for them. They're basically able to double their grant money, um, for supplies and things like that that they need. So we'll be putting out probably late summer, early fall, looking for volunteers and things like that and hold some open houses to, to talk to people about it that are interested. Because there are quite a few people that are interested in helping out, you know, during a storm.
During COVID, there were a ton of people who wanted to, but there just was no way to channel them, you know?
Correct, correct.
Yeah, that's great.
So, so we'll do that. Uh, and one thing I'm looking at in, this is up to you guys if you want to do it or not, but I'm going to, um, through MEMA, there's a NIMS class, uh, I believe it's called the 402 class. But what it's for, it's for elected officials. It's for select boards, boards of health, um, town administrators, people that work in town hall, things like that. So that when I'm sending you paperwork to sign saying, "Hey, we're declaring a state of emergency", you understand what you're signing. Um, that you're not signing your rights away or anything like that. If God forbid it was a massive hurricane that blew through here and now federal urban search and rescue task forces are coming through the area, it, it, Hanson is still in control, we're still the local authority for everything. But it's a class to be able to help understand what your roles and responsibilities are as elected officials and-
What does NIMS stand for?
Oh, I'm sorry, National Incident Management System. So, or it, it used to be the old incident command system, now it's National Incident Management System.
I mean, I think, I, I'm, I'm totally in favor of that.
Okay.
David, what do you think? Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I think, yeah, because, you know, you don't want to be learning in the middle of an emergency what your role is and what your responsibilities are. So, yeah, I, I think that sounds great.
Okay, excellent. So I'll be working, I'll be working on that, um, with MEMA over the next couple of weeks and we'll set that up. And also I'm going to be working with Mass Maritime to set up some, uh, tabletop exercises that we can get everybody involved with also. Uh, hurricane season has begun. Hurricane 2023 has already begun. Um, FEMA and, and others have already been pushing out everything about it. Um, to us, we'll start a social media campaign about all of it in late July and August just so people can be prepared because one big one that we find is, um, generator safety. We do more carbon monoxide calls with people legitimately sick or fires because of generators in homes, so that'll be a big one that we're pushing. Um, people making sure that they've got oxygen, enough oxygen in case their power goes out, things like that that we'll be doing. Um, one thing I do want to change, um, that was previously done is 72 hours before the event, at least start a meeting with department heads and whoever from the select board would like to be there, um, to at least discuss, hey, here's what it looks like and at least get everything set. Because one thing that definitely helps out for federal reimbursement is everybody on the same page and everybody literally from the papers, and you'll learn about this in the class, here are the paperwork that gets filled out because it's all federal documents. It makes our life much easier when it comes to federal reimbursements and things like that. Um, for the command staff at the fire department, quite a few people have a lot of, um, emergency management training, but we do have some people that, that wasn't their specialty. So we're going to bring all the command staff, um, up to a level that I would like them at uh, over the next year. For, and I already talked about the tabletop exercises. And then MEMA puts on a hurricane conference every year, uh, this year on July 25th. It's at Mass Maritime Academy. MEMA asked me to present at it, um, so I'll actually be presenting as part of, uh, the helicopter aquatic rescue team and urban search and rescue.
That's awesome, so you'll be representing.
Yes, yes, so we'll be there. Um, just some initiatives and things that we've had going on over the last six months and continuing with. Um, the first one is a feasibility study. Uh, the RFP, I've been working on it over the last year. The RFP, I've been working on it over the last year. And we, Ms. Green and I have spoken about, we wait until McQuan was pretty much buttoned up and there was a great meeting about that today that she'll tell you about. But, um, so sometime in July, I'll be sending that to her and all the legal people will look at it and things like that and get that ready to be pushed out. And I, like I always tell people, this isn't that we're building a new fire station tomorrow. We're not. You know, the building is, uh, right now it's forty-six, forty-seven years old. It's actually when people come in, they're like, wow, it's in great shape. Well, the firefighters live there. It is legitimately their second home. But a lot of people don't realize when it was originally built, it wasn't built for us to be there twenty-four hours a day, it wasn't built for co-ed, and the original senior center was actually out of there. The whole front room was a senior center. So basically what we're doing is, okay, putting a roadmap in place as far as, hey, here's things that we need to look at and then here's some different ideas. Because one thing that our department as a whole has talked about is, we don't think it'd be beneficial to move the fire department anywhere than where it is. Like, they basically decide what to do in the front of the building. Are we putting a legitimate second floor on or are we dropping it down or rebuilding from there? So things like that is what they're going to look at. But again, that's further down the road, we're just putting the roadmap in place because obviously the highway department, some other buildings need things much, much sooner than we do. There's a drone program. So that is funded partially through grant funding. Firefighter Heffernan, he is our drone pilot. He, um, through grant money, we wrote a grant, he went out and got all the training and you actually have to have a pilot's license to be able to fly drones. Through Homeland Security Grants, because he's attached with himself and TJ White and I, attached with technical rescue. So through Homeland Security, the, the flight hours and everything that they do when they fly is actually digitally tracked, for lack of a better way of putting it. Homeland Security grant funding pays for all that. All of his log hours, everything that we do with it is all funded through that. The only thing that we're doing is we're purchasing the drone itself for about, with everything, six thousand dollars. So the nice part for us is, first on search and rescue end, we, it happens to us a handful of times a year that people get lost in the barge. And the air wing, state police air wing does a phenomenal job, but they're not always in the area. With a drone, we're able to launch it right away, get it out there and, and take a look at it. The other thing is, is for pre-planning for buildings. We're able to put that up over buildings, take a look at buildings and see are there structural issues that we need to be concerned about and think about? Is there better access to things? That kind of stuff. I'll give you an example, JJ's Pub, that fire was, oh, five or more years ago now. We used a drone, the head over fire chief has his own personal drone, he put it up so I could see where the area was that we couldn't get out because there was one area that was stubborn and the ladder, the guys in the ladder trucks couldn't see it because of the amount of smoke that was coming up at them that day. They were able to put the drone in there, we were able to figure it out. So there's multiple uses for it. The police chief is on board with this because we brought him in and firefighter Heffernan has, is another small one that he, he's an incredible pilot, where he put on the headset, the chief's in this, in our main classroom area, drone comes flying through the building and he's flying it off through the building showing to the chief. And Chief Mix was pretty impressed with that, so. I couldn't touch it because I would crash it, so. State earmark for cardiac screening, Deputy Barron's did that two years ago, it was successful this year. We've got state earmark funding for that, again, coming up this year. So we're doing that. We submitted a grant through AFG for the Cascade System, that's a system that fills our air bottles, the current system's over twenty years old. So we're confident that we'll be able to do that. Fire prevention, you guys are aware of that we're taking a, a big step forward when it comes to fire prevention between Lieutenant White and Deputy Barron's. And then some training coming up, so McQuan School, Ms. Green and I met on it and we'll be keeping her in the loop, but in early August, we're going to start doing some firefighter survival training in there. And so we will not be interrupting anything else that's going on with it because all of our training will be at night with it and we'll get clearances and everything like that beforehand. But we went through the building today and they gave us, here's a good area to do it, utilize that area for any training and things like that that you want to do.
May I just suggest you?
Absolutely.
Put this on social media.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, yes.
We will get the, what's happening with the pond.
Yeah, you get a whole bunch of phone calls, yes, yes. Yeah, so, so that, so we'll be doing firefighter survival firefighter bailout training and some active shooter training in there. And then one thing, I invite this board, I've, I've, I've pushed it also out to the Fincom and I pushed it out to the townspeople, come to the fire station, come on in, sit down, we'll give you a tour of the place, we can tell you how it was and what it looked like twenty years ago just compared to how it is now. One of the big things that I love to do is show people, hey, here's what grants are paid for. Because we've got a lot, we've got more technology and thank God for our young firefighters because they know how all this technology works, but we've got TVs and stuff all over the place that is amazing, the information that we're able to gather from the regional colony communications center. But what grant funding is paid for in our building is incredible. And so I like to tell people about that. And one big thing that I like to tell people about is what the ambulance account is paid for. Because in the last twenty years, the ambulance account has virtually paid, the ambulance account of grants have paid for everything on the apparatus side of the building with the exception of two engines. That's it. The ambulance taxpayers have not had to pay for any of that. So, so I invite AM, come on down, like I've told you before, I get that thirty-minute glass, we'll flip it in my office, you'll be all set, I won't keep you up all day. So, and then just honestly, a big thank you to the staff of the fire department. Everybody has been phenomenal. It has been a, it has been a big change for everybody. Like I, like I've talked to everybody on the staff about, it's probably the biggest change for, for the lieutenants and the command staff because there is a lot that we are putting onto their plate, but they have embraced it with open arms and quite honestly, like the two lieutenants you saw here tonight and the two that have, they have been lieutenants for a while, they're like, okay, give me more. Yep, give me, what else you need, what else you need? So, and that has been absolutely phenomenal. And same thing with the firefighters. Everybody is so engaged with things right now, it, it's an excellent work environment. And everybody is, has just been phenomenal. So I thank them because they are truly doing some outside of the box thinking, which is really what I'm encouraging there. So, and they've been excellent, so. And I want to thank the board for the opportunity tonight to present this to everybody, so.
Kudos to you and your leadership. And you can see the energy level, like, and, you know, I've been to the fire station a couple of times and everybody's, like you said, very engaged and very, you know, forward thinking and, and it's wonderful to see, it's really wonderful to see.
Thank you. So any questions from anybody on anything at all?
No, no questions, but I just want to echo what Laura said because I just feel like ever since you stepped into the role and everyone else has kind of gone into their roles, you can, it's just fun watching you guys just love being firefighters and just like enjoying it. Not that that wasn't happening that way before, but you know, sometimes new shaking things up, people in new roles, everyone just seems so enthusiastic and so engaged and so just positive. I love the teamwork that goes into it. You guys clearly support each other so much, it's just great to see that. Because transitions, like we've been saying, like transitions are always incredibly hard. It's great to see everybody just smiling and just enjoying it.
And I gotta thank Deputy Barron's because he, he probably, like I tell people, the lieutenants have to look at their twenty-four hour shift in the week, the deputy has to look at basically the week and the month, and then I look at the month and the year going forward. So he has to deal with a lot of daily operational stuff and he's, he's stepped right into and been doing a phenomenal job with it, so. So, and everybody at town hall has been excellent, so.
Well, we're excited to see what this team can do.
Thank you, thank you. So thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great presentation.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you. And like I said, anybody in town, come on down, we got plenty of stuff for kids and things like that too, so.
Can we play with the drone?
Uh, you know, so I'll let firefighter Heffernan answer that one because I won't even touch any of that stuff.
You don't have a pilot's license, Ed, you can't.
So.
Maybe.
Well, you play with the siren on the truck. That will help.
Thanks, guys.
All right, thank you. Let him ring the bell.
Yes, that makes sense.
Ms. Green, while we're transitioning here, I wondered if you wanted to give us an update on Kerry Glass certification, certification update.
So actually, Madam Chair, he is on vacation this week. He was going to submit something to me and he flipped his mind, he didn't, he didn't send anything to me, so I'd like to table that through the July eleventh.
Okay.
So that he can come to the meeting and update the board.
Yeah, it's been a minute and we, we need to, we need to get a refreshed status on that. Thanks, guys. Take care. All right, next up is the pond management discussion. So I think Mr. Heel, you're the one who kind of brought this to my attention. And this has come up periodically and I, I know we've voted line items, but I don't know that we've really voted on lines of demarcation or responsibility or, you know. So, did you want to kind of?
At the Conservation Commission meeting, there were a few discussions about various pond items and it was mentioned that it's not necessarily in the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction and that the town, that it's a town resource and we kind of manage.
Yeah, it's a weird, it's a weird thing because I know we've had that discussion and it doesn't, it's not under the, it's not a wetlands issue. I know that sounds weird because it's ponds, but it, and there's board of health components to it too, or there can be. And I know we at past town meetings have allocated money for pond management, but it doesn't seem as though there's anybody whose sole task is to manage the ponds. And I, so I didn't know if you wanted to speak on that or, I don't know if you or Frank or both of you wanted to speak on it. Feel free to come here, you can sit where you are, whatever you, whatever is most convenient for you.
If it's feasible to you, we're happy in these chairs.
Okay, great.
I'm not sure that they can be heard from that.
Brian, can they be heard or can we make them be heard?
Too bad, it's a little more quiet, I can just move this microphone.
Okay. We're all about comfort of our guests.
Okay, again, there may be a little bit of a tag team approach here, but Frank and I and the rest of the Conservation Commission have spent a lot of time discussing both in an organized and an informal manner about our ponds. I think it's true that most people feel one of the best things about living in Hanson is we have a lot of ponds, we have a lot of surface water bodies that are, to a certain extent scenic, some of the recreational resources, towns and cities that don't have them wish they did and the towns that do have them are happy. But I think it's also true that we can't trust the ponds, lakes, whatever you turn the voice to use, just to take care of themselves and always be fine. There's too many people having too many impacts over too many years and decades to have that be true anymore. And we have seen issues in neighboring communities and in this community where water quality largely around plants, sometimes floating plants that don't look like plants, but many other things are issues. And there have been different things done in different communities in different times. Mostly Hanson has been watching what's been done elsewhere because we've had the luxury of not having to do a whole lot, but we think those days are, are pretty much passed. Conservation also has a lot of things to do and fifty years ago, whenever Conservation Commission started, it was just about acquiring land and having town forests, things like that. And then the Wetlands Protection Act got passed and the Rivers Protection Act, so the workload became much larger and all these state laws had to be enforced by local people who run around mostly not getting paid. And so there's a lot of things to do already. And despite our ambitions and the things we actually have done in some cases, it probably is not realistic to expect, let's say, the Conservation Commission to also assume pond management. We've, we've done some researching around for right ways to approach this. Fortunately, one of the things we have is this thing that Massachusetts put out a couple of decades ago called The Practical Guide to Lake Management in Massachusetts. Sounds pretty applicable and it is. The subtitle is, it's basically a summary of a more complex report, talks about ponds that are going eutrophic, they have algae and stuff growing in that they don't want and other aquatic plants. That's the most visible part of water quality, but there's many other things too. It's probably time for the town to look at models that exist in other communities and have been tried and either worked or didn't work or who knows, in other places. There are volunteer organizations, often watershed associations, there are actual town departments that are organized in somewhat, in very different ways than Hanson, more complex ways. We've looked a little bit at what the town of Plymouth is doing. And interestingly, most of us being done there is under the guidance of a person who twenty years ago was conservation agent here in Hanson, David Gould. So we have good communication with the town of Plymouth and they also have a lot of things on their website. It comes down to being methodical and systematic and careful in what you do and building an approach is the right approach. You could do it sort of a shotgun approach, there may be a desire to say, oh, let's, let's spread alum on the ponds and everything, that's deciding what the treatment should be before you diagnose the patient. And I make the comparison of healthcare, if a person goes along and, like everyone, needs healthcare, you line yourself up with a doctor, the doctor doesn't, the first thing, doesn't do as a first step, decide all these treatments you should get and so on, they, you get a physical, you do blood work, you, you just look at many details and that will put together a picture, probably a little quicker to do it for a person than for a pond. But we have things that we could and should do and should talk about.
So certainly, whatever form we end up, whatever we evolve to, we'll just put it that way, whether it be, I'm loath to say this, another committee or whatever, however we evolve, there definitely has to be interplay with the Conservation Commission.
Yes.
There's no, you know, there's no way that that could be completely an isolated decision that that pond management individual or entity or whatever would make without some kind of an interaction there.
Yeah, the key is to have people who know what they're looking for and how to look for it, do the looking and not just do the looking, but do the planning. Basically, this, this document, this practical guide to lake management has a lot of good statements in it. It's, it talks about involving the public, which certainly includes public departments and agencies as well as individuals and moving from just whatever the perceived problems are or perceived, gee, I think this could be a problem, to discovering what the reality is. And we, as, as conservation, we want to be involved. Again, we have been involved, we have made a few ideas, we just want to be involved in an organized way, in a way that truly moves us or builds a platform that the next step can be built on and having it built on reality, not just perceptions. Oh, my pond smells terrible every summer or there's too many mussels or the fish died the other day. There's, there's a lot of anecdotal observations and sometimes people do know what they're looking at, but sometimes you just got to dig deeper and be patient and get more information. We've done that in a small way with Longchamp Pond out here, there was earmark money from about four or five years ago. And we did a study, we know more about the chemistry and the biology of this pond than we ever did before. We haven't done it for our other two major ponds. There's, we want to be involved, but we look to the select board to accept the fact that it's a town-wide interest thing, it's not a small Baileywood for a few people who don't mind looking at regulations and.
No, I mean, fair enough. Obviously, you've already got quite a bit on your plate, as does Mr. Skellinger, Dr. Skellinger. So I, I think maybe if you wouldn't mind sharing what you have with Ms. Green and then, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks, but I'd like to maybe have Ms. Green think about this and come back to us with a recommendation on how we might, how we, you know, how we might organize around this, whether it's, again, hate to use the committee word, but a committee, what are others doing in our, our location? I'm sure the North River Watershed Association would have some ideas about how others are organized and perhaps even the Taunton River Watershed people would have some ideas. So there's got to be some information out there. So I, does anybody feel differently than to have Ms. Green look at this and, and circle back with us and maybe, I don't know, maybe say in late August, early September, Ms. Green, maybe, you know, just to afford some time for vacations and a little bit of research, come back and make a recommendation to us or a couple of potential recommendations of things that we might do? Because what I don't want is for these two gentlemen to have to keep coming back to the board time after time and talking about the fact that somebody needs to pick up responsibility for this. And it seems to me this is at least the second, possibly the third time since I've been on the board, that, that they've expressed this in different ways and always very politely, but I don't feel like we're moving the needle forward on it.
So who has, I mean, is this the committee to establish who has responsibility?
No, no, I just want Ms. Green to kind of, kind of canvass some of the surrounding towns, maybe look at what Mr. Clemens has for materials.
So towns that also have as many, as much water.
Yeah, I mean, because you know, we've got Plimpton, Halifax, you know, some of our little surrounding little cranberry brethren and see, you know, what are they doing and, you know, and what does North River Watershed Association think, like, could they be an ad hoc, you know, a member clearly would want, you know, I don't want to over-engineer it, but I do think, you know, we've got so, a wealth of knowledge out there and all of these people that are dealing with this. We are not conservation experts on this board, except for Ed, because he's on conservation, but even he would admit, he's probably in his infancy on that. But, you know, so we are not conservation experts, so we need to just make sure, or wetlands or whatever, we're not pond experts, none of the above. So we just need to make sure that we're leveraging the expertise we have efficiently, not harnessing a group that's well-intentioned and already overburdened with the responsibility of that, but collaborating with them. So, Mr. Clemens, did you have?
I just summarized by saying that I think lots of people, including people in this room, realize that management is necessary. The earliest centuries are over and this one is upon us. And there is a lot of information to be found out, let's go, let's go mine that, that set of information so that whatever Hanson does, it can be the right thing, it can be efficient. can be efficient. I mean, we heard about some things changing in other departments now. This is a great time, I think, to look at how to manage one of our most useful resources. What I have said to people many times is, of all the natural resources in Hanson, I think the one people appreciate the most, whether to think about it or not, is the air breathing, great oxygen. The second thing is Maquon Haunt.
Absolutely.
Where Cranberry Cove is and Camp Kawani and all that. And let's, we've started to see issues there. Let's not take a shotgun approach, but let's be systematic and as smart as we can be.
Yep, agree. I also think there needs to be a board of health component in there, because there's some testing that might need to happen. So anyway, do you feel comfortable with your extremely ambitious task at hand that we've handed you?
So I did, I did reach out to all the social managers to see what towns that do have ponds, what they do for pond management. And there really isn't any, basically only three towns responded. And East Bridgewater, they use their DPW. And basically Norton, they have a Water Bodies Committee that oversees.
Oh, okay.
And then Pembroke, the town manager's office overseas. But the town manager's office, they have three full-time employees in the office. So that was, those were the only towns who responded to, you know, what do you do for town pond management? So nothing, it looks like it's, you know, different departments.
Well, let's see what, whether you can take a look at Mr. Clemens's material, and then perhaps, you know, cast the net a little bit wider within the state and see if there's anybody outside of our geographic area that, you know, I can't, it seems to me as though we, we can't be the first town that's got this problem. Yes, we are particularly, you call it, and amazing. But there are likely other towns that have ponds as well.
Yeah, watershed, the watershed, the watershed folks will be a lot of its resources. So that'd be great. And I'll look at the information that Mr. Clemens has put together. So that'd be great.
All right, that sounds good.
My final comment, if I may. One thing we've seen is a tendency in some places for an outside consultant to be brought in, and they usually have good information and do reasonable good work. But interestingly, the management recommendations that they have are along the lines of how you should hire them to do more things.
That's predictable.
And that's perhaps not the ideal model for the...
No, nor would be commissioning a report that gathers dust and we do nothing with and we're talking about this 10 years from now.
Right. There's a right path to find. So we look forward to following it.
All right. Well, thanks for bringing that to our attention. And thank you, Mr. Heel, for, you know, mentioning that that was a topic of discussion. And we'll be, you know, we'll, sometime in late August or early September, we'll look forward to Ms. Green. And we'll let you, our office will let you guys know so that if you want to participate.
We're around. Thank you.
Okay. All right, great. All right, great. Thank you. With that, I'm trying to think, we will move to the, we already kind of had the Recreation Committee/Commission discussion.
Yeah, I did.
And there really wasn't much to discuss, other than we developed a committee. It is not a commission. And that brings us to the Plymouth County Retirement Association COLA option. Ms. Green and I believe, are you two gentlemen from, okay, so if you can just hold, I just want Ms. Green to queue it up, and then we'll acknowledge you. Okay. And guys, I'm sorry, Mr. Kenny and Mr. Layton? We'll be like, probably 10 minutes or so?
Okay.
Okay. All right. Ms. Green.
Okay. So to give a little background on this, this has to do, I believe there was legislation signed by Governor Baker to address cost of living adjustments for retirees for the state of Massachusetts. And this includes all retirees, police, fire, municipal governments, retirees.
Retirees effective of...
So the retirees, the date of this particular cost of living adjustment is for retirees who retired prior to June 30th of 2022. So anyone, any retiree who retired on, from July 1 of 2022 is not eligible for this cost of living adjustment. And what that does, and basically Plymouth County was one of the organizations that introduced this to Plymouth County, county municipalities. What they're going to do is they're going to do a bump of 3% up to 5%. So basically, they're going, is that correct? It's 3%?
I think the counties already have 3%.
Yes.
They're probably going to give 2% to equal 5%.
Just to be clear, they already have 3%.
They already have 3%.
So it's an additional 2% that we're talking about.
They're going to, right, they're going to give a 2% increase, so that equals 5%.
For five years.
For five years. So basically, this increase is, this increase is going to take effect for FY '25, and it will go through FY '29, and then it ends in FY '29. The cost of that for the town is going to be about $53,000, $53,027 for the town for the next five years for the, this cost of living adjustment for retirees. Again, retirees who retired prior to June 30 of 2022. So before you, this evening, all, basically all the communities within Plymouth County have all been voting on this. And right now, the majority of what we have is, most of the communities have voted yes.
And can you speak to the two-thirds?
Well, West Bridgewater is one that had voted, actually, they did not vote on this. So they didn't vote yes or no, they just didn't vote on this.
I'm sorry. Just to be clear, if two-thirds of the towns that are impacted vote for this, regardless of whether we vote for in the affirmative or not, it will pass.
That's correct.
So at this point, do we have a determination of what percent or what fraction of the impacted towns have voted to adopt this? Do you gentlemen know that information?
Yes, anytime you'd like.
Right now, we have 18 towns that have voted to approve this. There are basically, Metapoiset, we don't have, they're actually voting on this this evening. Plymouth has not yet voted on it, and I don't have a date that they are going to vote on this. And basically, those are the only two towns right now in Hanson.
Okay.
Is discussing a vote this evening.
And the annual impact to us for the five years of the duration of this increase is what?
About $53,027.
Per year?
Per year, for the next five years.
Okay. And before I hear from you gentlemen, I'd like to hear from our town accountant. Did you have any thoughts or reflections?
Sure. Like, I'm not this person. So basically, the bottom line is, each retiree's going to get $160 increases, because it's one, it's done. 2% of the whole amount is 2% of the $18,000 base. And it's going to cost the town, our liability will up $251,000, $250,000. That'll be funded over five years. So basically, it's a trade-off. The retirees give an extra $160, and the town gets, and that increases that to $50,000 a year. So that's...
Okay. And do you gentlemen mind introducing yourselves?
Sure.
And then tell us what you know about it and what your role is.
Good evening, Madam Chair. I'm Honorable Board, I'm Charles Amanetti. I spoke with you about a week ago.
Yes, you did.
This is Rich Harvey. He's a retiree from Middleborough, but he lives in Halifax. And we just came from Halifax, and he joined me just for company, more than anything to see how this works.
We just left the Halifax meeting.
Yeah. So I'm working, I'm chairman of the Middleborough Retirees Insurance Group. We handle retirees from Middleborough, about 450 people and their families. And been doing that since 2009. And I've been, I was 36 years as a worker in Middleborough and retired with 36 years, obviously, in 2009 also. So been retired for about 14 years. Just to give you a little bit more history on this, as you were told, the bill was passed in December. Prior to being passed, the governor had to put an amendment on it to allow the towns to, which are called units within the retiring system, to have a say as to whether they wanted to give their local retirees this money. The, so the governor put that amendment in, and it was passed through legislature. The PARAC, which is the State Organization for Retirees, issued a letter to the counties, and they actually voted on this, not until the 13th of April. The reason for that was there was some issues with their, with their leadership as far as turnover. And during the meeting, in fact, the executive director actually had a heart attack right in the meeting. And two of his committee members saved him. One was a retired firefighter, conveniently. And, but they, of course, took him to the hospital in the end of the meeting. So the only thing they got to do in that meeting was actually pass this unanimously. And then at that point, they never got a chance to enact anything on it until the new director came in. As soon as the new director came in on the 1st of May, he took hold of it, and he had to go to the county commissioners, which is unique in Plymouth County, because they had to vote for it. And they also passed it unanimously. See, in most counties, you don't do that. You just go directly to the units. So once that passed, he got a letter out to you, and it was late, obviously. It wasn't until the 31st of May. That's why we're here to this late in the timeframe. And the timeframe is the 30th. By the 30th, it has to be completed. I'm just telling you all that because I didn't, you know, we don't usually do business that way. If we can get things done quicker, we do. And by the way, I'm a volunteer for Plymouth County, just helping him out because of the circumstances. I saw what happened, gave Tom O'Brien a call, and said, do you need some help with this? And he said, yeah, absolutely.
Now, this is not retroactive, right?
This is the way this works.
Okay.
The, initially, we have a COLA of 3%, as long as the CPI is greater than 3%. It's been that way for a few years, two, maybe five or six years. Prior to that, there was limited COLA, if any, almost like social security. They had, they had limited COLA up until that time. The difference with the COLA and social security is that you get the COLA on the full amount. We get a COLA on a base, which initially was $12,000. In the years, up until this year, it's gone to $16,000. The amount that we're discussing tonight is an additional 2% of the base COLA, $16,000, for fiscal year '23, which started last July 1st and finishes the end of this June. It'll be a retroactive payment to the retirees. The retirees have to be, by law, they have to be retired a year, calendar year, prior to the initiation of the COLA, to get the COLA. Otherwise, they're on their first year of retirement, they don't get a COLA. So if you weren't retired for a year in Jan, in July 1st, 2022, you would not get this. So actually, it's '21 is the year you have to retire by, to get this. The amount is actually $320, which is 3%, 2% of $16,000. So that amounts to $26.67 a month. Now, the reason why this was brought to bear was that, as you know, the social security and the CPI both had a 5.9% and an 8.7% increase in CPI, and that's what they gave full social security for their COLA. So they got a 14.6% increase in COLA over the last two years on their full social security amount, which averages about $20,000, between $18,000 and $20,000, depending on the area of the country. We're asking for a 2% increase to the 3%, which would be a 5%. And over the two years, it would be a total of 8% instead of 14%. And it's only on the $16,000. So it's probably compatible to a 6-7% increase in social security over two years. I think it's a reasonable ask. I know towns are really up against it. That's not the question here. But what I wanted to do is, you know, I wanted to give you a little idea of how the actuary arrived at the figures that he gave your finance person. What basically he did was, he took the life expectancy with the old tables, we're not using the new tables yet, so people aren't expected to live as long with the old tables. So what he did is, he took all the eligible retirees, obviously, they have to be retired before July 1st of '21, in your community. And he came up with about, about 80 retirees. And then he took that amount and took the $320 that you, that we get the first year. And then after that, it would be part of their base, just like every COLA in Massachusetts, it becomes part of your base. So you don't get another $320, but you start your next percentage, depending on the CPI, based on that amount. So, and for the lifespan of the retiree. And that's the, then he took that total figure and divided that by five. Now, the reason why he divided it by five is because your intent, or the intent of Plymouth County is to have all of your retirement paid off, all your arrears in retirement paid off by fiscal year '29, as it stands right now. So that's a five-year window between fiscal '25 and fiscal '29, that you're going to pay off your total amount. And if you look at the sheet that they gave you, I don't know if you have it or not, but it should be the one that, it's a bunch of numbers, but if you follow your line across, it looks similar to this. It's from the actuary. It says PCRS 5% COLA. Go down to Hanson, and you'll see that the first set of figures is your total amount that you owe on retirement. And that's for the five, that's for the total five years. And first column is with a 3%, and the second column is with a 5%. And then the difference is, is the total amount for the five years you'd have to pay if you vote the 5%, the extra 2%. And then the third, the fourth, fifth and sixth column is similar, but it's only for fiscal year '25, the first year. So if you were to vote this tonight, well, you know, what you're concerned about, are you, hold on, I'll let him, he's trying to find his paperwork.
All right, you can go.
What he, what he basically did is, he made the same computation just for that, for that year. So if you were to vote this for tonight, you wouldn't have to have any changes in your budget this year. The first time you'd have to visit this would be November or so, when the selectmen start building their budget for next year. And of course, it'd be a fiscal year ending '25 that it would affect. So your finance committee would look at it around January, February. Now, just keep in mind, if you're not aware, the Plymouth County Retirement Board posts their actuarial data and the actual assessments to each town in January on their website. And of course, you could always call either Mr. O'Brien, or you could call the Plymouth County Retirement Association and get those numbers in January. So that will assist you with the actual numbers. We don't expect they'll be as high as what we gave you in here. That, Mr. O'Brien actually did, had the actuary do a very conservative view of those numbers, because he didn't want, he doesn't like to tell you something and then have to go higher. So...
Okay. So when you say conservative, in a way, almost worst-case scenario, in terms of funding?
Yes. That's correct. Yeah.
Okay. And may I just interrupt you for, Mr. Kent, chef, did you have any, I know you...
Just to clarify, can you...
Yeah, yeah.
In FY '24, did the base go up to $18,000?
It will go up in FY '24, as of July 1st, but the COLA is only for the first year.
And each COLA is based on $18,000 to start next?
It will start next year, yes. This year, the COLA is based on the 16, and this thing we're voting on is a one-time 2%, just for, just for the last year.
Yeah. As far as the actuarial goes, like being conservative, if you're using old mortality tables, people live longer, right?
Yes.
When the costs go up, because people will be collected for longer.
You're right on top of it. That's about where I was just going to head.
Right.
All right. So what I was going to say is that the only, the only caveat to this is that we are still using the old actuary tables. When we do the new actuary tables, your prices may go up when they actually go into those tables. I don't know when that's going to be. He cut it, stopped it for COVID, because obviously it threw a whole monkey wrench and everything. But when he does so, they're going to look at moving the five-year to a six-year plan. So if it has to be done, in other words, if the figures go up enough so that it wouldn't effectively, you know, affect your town that much. And we don't know, you don't really know that, because if we get good returns, his return's around 8.7%, and he's in the top 1% of the whole country as far as retirement systems, as far as his investments go. So he does quite well with his investments. Consequently, if you borrow money from him, which you're actually doing right now for the next five years, he has to charge you, I think he charges 7-point-something percent, because he's losing 8-point-something percent every year in his investments with the money that you owe. So bottom line is that it's to your benefit to pay it off as soon as you can, just like a mortgage. Thing is that you could ask him to go out further, but it would cost you more in, you know, in interest. So...
So I just want to clarify something.
Yes.
These are retired...
So I just want to clarify something. These are retired municipal employees?
Yes. What happened is when the law was passed, the teachers that worked in your schools are through a different retirement system. And they got the 5% immediately and all the state workers got the 5% immediately. This only affects your police, fire, DPW and workers in the school and, of course, that aren't teachers. And of course, people that work for you.
Not excluding the teachers, basically, sort of. Not that we're excluding teachers, but this...
They already got 5%.
And you mentioned that it was five years longer. There's two things that you're talking about with five years. I just want to make sure. You said that we're going to give them a 5%. Going out to five years is our payoff, not that we're going to pay them 5% for five years?
No, it's your total payoff is out five years. What they did, though, is they took the total payoff for the COLA, the 2% COLA, and over, you know, to cover everyone for the rest of their lives and they divided that by five and you'll pay that off also. So by the end of '29, if everything goes as it's planned to go, you'll be paid off completely on your arrears. And you should see a reduction in that total figure on the second line. I think it's, let me see, for Hanson, it's 13, three or five, 13,157, I believe it is. 13,4, 13,4. That should be reduced by 75% because you'll no longer have a payoff. So all you'll be paying for is your current retirees. And the current retirees, actually, it should be less than that because they pay a 9% on themselves. Plus, if they make over $30,000, they pay an additional 2% bump up. So they're actually paying more than their retirement's going to cost. And this is one of the unique things about Plymouth County is they actually overpay themselves for themselves.
Mr. Kent, I know you have independently verified these numbers because we're throwing a lot of...
Yeah, absolutely. I would feel that, I feel comfortable with the unfunded liability being $251,000. So Hanson liability would increase by $250,000. And Plymouth County's going to assess us to pay that extra liability off over the course of five years, which would be about $50,000. If the price goes up, as this gentleman said, Plymouth County is willing to maybe go over six years to make the impact, like $50,000 a year, if what I understood was correct. But I took absolutely the $251,000. I don't think that's, I don't think it's going to get any better than that, in my opinion. But it is what it is. That's the actuary. That's what they pay him to do. They're professionals in it, so that's actually going to be the cost.
And the obvious question, from when shall this money come?
Well, it'll just add to our structural deficit that we already have.
So will we be, when will we be expected to pony up this money?
In FY '25. So when we do our budget for next year, we just did the FY '24 budget. Our next budget cycle, when we get an estimate from Plymouth County, because I expect Plymouth County, even without this COLA, I expect our assessment to go up $210,000 compared to last year. And so with this, I've expected to go up like $260,000 additional, $50,000. So that's kind of what I'm...
All right, so we'll have to have a town meeting warrant article for that or we build it into... Okay, all right, just build it into the budget.
We kind of treat it as fixed costs once we meet the assessment. So it's just like, we just eat it and move forward.
Okay, did anybody have any other questions? I know that was a lot to unpack there on that. Mr. Hale?
On the right-hand column, it mentions $53,027 for the first year. That is going to go up every year?
That should be similar. It might go up a little bit, but at the most.
It's not going up 3% every, or 2% every year?
No, that number is the COLA amount, the 2%. That'll stay. Again, the COLA was 2%. It's a one-time thing that occurred this year.
But it's 2% of the $16,000?
And it'll always be that.
2% of $16,000? That $16,000 is changing?
No. The $16,000 is changing, but what happens is the law requires, mass law requires that the maximum COLA we can pay is 3%.
It what?
The mass law requires that it is only, the maximum amount you can pay a retiree in Massachusetts is 3%.
Okay.
All right, of the COLA base. So now, the only way we got to the 5% was they passed a special law last year, Chapter 269, that allowed it to go between 3% and 5%. So basically, we were asking for the 2% for the one year, which was last fiscal year, ending in July 1st. So this is, the figure you see in the $53,000 is actually 1/5 of the total cost of that one-time change.
Okay.
All right, Mr. George?
So basically, we're just giving, we're not giving, but obviously, they earned it. They're just getting what everybody else has already gotten.
Yes, but, well, everybody that's a state retiree.
Right. They've already got it. The teachers already got it. Everybody else has got it. They've got it. So we're just catching them up to where they should be.
Yes, and it's about a third of what social security recipients got.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Hale?
Oh, good question or comment. No, I just, I want to do this more than anything. I'd like the seniors to be able to get what... But then, how do you pay for it, I guess, is the...
We'll have to figure it out.
100% torn.
You're not alone, leave me in this. Everyone has to deal with it.
Okay. Any other? Okay. So, did anybody want to...
I'd like to make a motion.
So let's be clear about this motion because there's so many pitfalls for the unwary on this one. That we would approve a one-time 5% cost of living adjustment is authorized by Chapter 269 of the Acts of 2022.
I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, fantastic. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Did you abstain, Mr. Hale?
No, I did not.
Don't, I mean, you know...
I voted for it.
Okay, all right. I'm not trying to call you out. I just want to make sure that we're reporting your vote. Okay, so thank you very much for coming and informing us and we look forward to hearing. It seems as though it's going to pass because...
I think it is passed as of now because I think we're up around 18 and 19 and there's 23 communities. So that's over 2/3.
Okay.
But I want to thank you all for supporting your retirees. I know they worked hard for you for a lot of years and for the most part. And I know it's going to be hard and it's never easy, you know.
Yeah, but the costs are crazy for everybody and, like you said, these are people who dedicated a lot of years to us.
And the average retiree here makes 27, in Plymouth County makes 26,500. So as a retirement, you know, so that $320 goes a long way for them.
Yep. Well, thank you very much.
Thanks again.
All right, take care.
Thank you. It was a good learning experience for me.
All right. Very quickly, I don't think, you know, we don't need to, I just wanted to, I asked Lynn to put the next item on as a kind of continuous October 2023 special town meeting warrant article. Already tonight, we know we've got Alden Way reuse, I don't know why I just said reuse, Alden Way issue. And then fire department budget that Mr. O'Brien mentioned. Anybody have anything else that's not a speaking out or a hold-up piece? I just want to keep a running tally so when we get to that point, we're kind of all keeping track.
Do you want to look at the memo I drafted?
I saw it. Yeah, right. It's great. Really clear and concise.
Yeah. And then strategic planning update, not much to report on that. You know, unless anybody had, did you have anything on the communication piece, Ms. Green? If I'm stealing thunder from your town administrative report, we can go over it then.
No, actually, so we are going to be meeting with Blythe regarding the new website. But our IT director is going to be on vacation from July 10th to the 14th. So it'll probably happen, hopefully, maybe the week after that. He has been, he's been collecting pictures for the new website. I actually, I brought him out to the barge today so he could get some aerial view pictures, quite beautiful pictures. So we're completing that task and then hopefully, we'll just have the meeting with Capital Strategic Solutions. Blythe will be the lead on that.
And Mrs. Green is going to join you on that, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, please let me know what it is.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you so much, you guys, for waiting. I'm sorry. It was just a jam-packed agenda. So here we are, Leon Court nuisance dog update. Mr. Kenny, I thought I'd start with you if you want to lay it up for us and let us know what's happening on Leon Court.
So I think it was like June 3rd, 2nd or 3rd, I don't remember the date. But we got a video sent to us of one of the dogs that were in there previously for hearing for, got loose. It needed about a house, a two-house stand. Thing was recollected. But the other video turned out the dog was in the roadway. Flew the dog out the front door when a guest came over and ran down the road and it was recollected.
It was immediately retrieved. Okay.
Now, which dog was this? Was this the dog that...
The black dog.
And that's the dog that was the subject of the first one? Okay. And you were going to fix the fences and you were going to secure the perimeter and do all kind of things to make sure this dog never got out again?
Went out the front door when a neighbor came over. He didn't close it and he just shot right out the door like a cannon. And I went and got him within five minutes, if that. And again, first of all, I apologize for being late today. It was out the front pocket outside.
Yeah, sorry. Normally, that's not the case on Tuesday night for swearing-in ceremony.
But, you know, as Joe can attest, I've been keeping my end of the bargain. There's really nothing I can do about that particular situation. Someone came in my house, I had to close the door and he said, "What?" Boom, he's gone. And like I said, I basically got in my car and went and got him within three minutes and I brought him back home. And he hasn't gone out on a regular basis whatsoever. He's on the tether in an enclosed yard.
Okay. Mr. Ken?
I haven't had any other calls other than that one. The dog being loose. We did issue a fine, okay. Like I said, we haven't had anything else. The dog needed to go out to stay out.
This gentleman, his camera's all over his house and...
Okay, we're not going to talk about...
No, I'm just saying, that's how they found out. It sounded like he ran in the house or he barked at them or barked at any kids or anything along those lines. He got out of my house, ran right by their house and he goes to a house with two dogs he knows and that's the only way I can corral him. And I jumped in my car, I go to that house. The woman's got him sitting there on a leash. I put him back in and I take him out.
All right, so he knows where he wants to go when he gets out? Okay.
I might also add, my neighbor, who lives right next to him, recently got a dog that looks identical to mine, a black lab.
Okay, but you're not saying that it was his dog?
No, I'm not saying that. That particular one, he'll show me the video and it's a picture of me going to get it.
Oh, you're just saying in case this happens and he's...
Well, I expect it to because, again, this is a personal vendetta period.
Well, okay, we're not going to get into...
And we're not going to go there.
Character assassination, okay? All right.
And part two of that is that dog escaped about a week and a half ago, according to my neighbor, went up into their property, in their porch, set off alarms, yet there was no phone call for that. So that tells you what I'm dealing with.
Okay, so is the other dog properly licensed and all that stuff?
Yeah, both dogs are licensed.
What, the...
They just got him like, I want to think, two, three weeks ago so they wait for July 1st.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, okay.
Yeah, no, I haven't had any calls on yet.
All right, so, because, you know, we don't want...
They have six months.
Yeah, we just don't want any doppelganger, you know, accusations. Okay, so what is the board's will here? What do we, what's the, what do we want to do?
I'd like to say good job on catching the dog that quickly and let's hope it doesn't happen again. That's what I have to say about that.
That's kind of what I was feeling. It's like there's a limit. A dog is a living being. It's going to, unfortunately, he wants to go to the neighbor's house and I don't know, you know, you weren't the one that closed the door. It was the neighbor that came to your house that didn't properly latch the door. I mean, it's...
And that's the first thing I tell everybody. Don't let the dog out. Don't let the dog out. And a lot of times, I'll actually hold him. This particular time, I was sitting on the couch, we were watching the Sox and I'm like, "Close the door, close the door." And he left the yard like that. He used his snout, opened it and ran right out of the door.
I don't know what we should do.
Well, I mean, the main thing that I'm, I just would like an assurance from you and from Mr. Kenny is that what we asked you to do is in fact being done and this was just an exception. I mean, is the dog being, you know, restrained? Is the fence still in place?
The fence is still in place. He's on the second tether. He broke his first one. He's on the second tether. He hasn't, he hasn't gone out besides that, that I'm aware of. I'm sure I would have been called or got fined again. I don't know what to tell you. I don't know what more to do.
Is your dog a male dog?
Yes.
And the other ones females?
No, the other neighbors don't have dogs.
Oh, no, no, no. Where your dog goes running to, because if that dog goes in season, there's nothing keeping that dog.
I'm not sure. I looked into getting him done and the veterinarian said he's a little too old for that. It was a lot of complication.
I actually was just at the vet's today with my scarf law of a dog who just had, she just had a rabies shot, so... And they told me that they're actually recommending on certain animals now that they do not fix them because of the deterioration illnesses that they can have and stuff.
They're even, they're even telling you now to wait...
Yeah, if he's five, he's too old.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
He's too old.
Because, no, it can cause like canine crush, ligament stuff, all kinds of stuff, yeah.
And osteo...
So I did explore that route as well. To no avail, they told me he's too old. Like I said, I'm doing the best I can. I know you don't want to hear it, but it's personal. And there's nothing more than barring getting rid of him that I can do.
This last time, did he go onto the gentleman's property or just walked by?
No, by the street.
Just on the street, but not even on the property? Okay.
So in this one, it was just on the street.
Oh, so your dog wasn't hanging out in his yard?
No.
Oh, it just crossed, it just crossed the road. Is he going to call if somebody walks on it along?
There's a history. Well, there's a little bit of a history on this, yeah.
You said there was a fine, obviously?
Yeah, we did. We issued a fine for the dog getting out. In this case with the nuisance dog. You can go to more severe things, like there's other things you can do on the hearing. You could issue more things. But one of the offices just continued with the finding. The fine was issued. The property still has the rectifications that we asked for in play.
Because that's what I was going to, so everything you've seen...
If there was something, if there was something where it was like the dog wasn't hogged up and it got out of the fence and it moved, I would be a little bit more wary to be on the edge of caution saying, "Hey, let's go another hearing." In this case, the dog got out the front door when the guest came over. I don't think it was something negligent on any part. I think it was more of a, it happened. High-energy dog and it went out the front door.
What are you recommending, Joe?
I recommend continually, continue with the finding. Unfortunately, to protect everyone involved, including the other party, I think, continue to, if it does get loose, we do something like this, we bring it in, discuss this board, continue on that route. Continue with the finding, get a fine and bring it into a board. Because if something was to change or a different scenario, there might be a different reaction. I think in a scenario like this, we kind of just deal with the finding. It's not an intentional release. It's not negligence on the rules that we set forth for the town. It's a pure accident.
And honestly, I think we'd be talking about something different as a board if this was a dog that was aggressively...
Yes, so I think too, if this was something where the dog got loose, it was running around for hours on end in the neighborhood. If it was a dog that got loose and it was, had a bite history or something like that, it'd be a different story. In this case, the dog was recollected within a very short period of time.
And no bite history?
There's no bite history. It was not, the dog was unattended and left, got loose. It was immediately rectified. The dog was recontained. It was immediately rectified. The dog was recontained.
Okay, so I would just say, you know, we have, we speculate all the different things that can happen, but we have Officer Kenny on the ground. You've been responsive. You pretty much, every time something happens, you're very attentive to it. You bring it right to everybody's attention. You've already handled all the situations. So instead of speculating on what could have, would have happened, we just kind of, I'm just opting that we just go with your recommendations. We move forward based on that. And if anything changes, we just do what you said. We just come back here, talk about it again, and resolve it as things progress. Seems like you're being responsive, so thank you for continuing to be open and open-minded and transparent and, you know, working with everybody. Because I know it's got to be tough from your end as well, so...
Yeah.
Well, I'm trying to make it as quick and painless as possible, so I think we just move forward based off of what's already been done.
Can I make a recommendation?
Yeah.
How about doing, do a little bit of training with him? Have you done any training with him? I mean, he's only five, he's still young.
I've tried.
Lot of YouTube videos out there on training dogs. There's a ton of them.
I've tried. I even tried the electric shock thing.
What do you mean?
Not the shock, I'm sorry. The electric fence.
Yeah.
Runway.
Well, the thing is, on the fence, once they get through, they're gonna, they're gonna get a, they're gonna get a jolt coming back in.
Unfortunately, he's too smart for his own good.
Have you tried a training collar?
Um, no. What's that?
It's a training collar.
I'm not familiar with that.
Yeah, look it up online. It's a training collar. It kind of works like that fence, but it's, it's in your control. I mean, I, I have two dogs. I can open my front door and my dogs won't go. They're not a lot, they know they're not a lot...
It's, that's a matter of door training. I mean, I'm going through it right now with my dog.
Yeah, okay.
Look it, look it up.
I'll give it a bit. The other one, it's docile. He doesn't, he doesn't come on unless I say come on. You know, the other one will just, he, last summer, he jumped through my screen, my screen door.
Oh, I believe it.
You know, right through it, on, on second floor.
I believe it.
About an eight, eight-foot drop.
Wow.
Right through it.
I deal with two Chesapeake Bay Retrievers. They're a...
Yeah, I'm gonna look and maybe get a training for them.
You really should.
Well, if you look, go online. You can go online. I mean, Petsmart sells them, Petco sells them. They all sell them. It's just, it's an e-collar. It gives them a correction. A lot of people call it a shock collar. It's really not a shock collar because you can put it in your hand and, and you can, it's just a stimulation as all it is.
You can also do noise with that one. It doesn't have to be the shock.
Right, you can do the...
You can vibrate. The collars that I use, they, you can either give them a correction or you can vibrate the collar.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, once they, once they know that they've been, you've got to train them with the collar a little bit. You can't, you can't just throw that collar on them and expect them to like respond to it. So you'd have to like...
My old, my old dog, he was, I had to do that for him and he took to it right away. Never came near the fence.
I mean, it's just, you can get them from $59 to $300, $400, $500, $600.
He could use a shocker too.
Okay. Well, it's not the official will of this board to have you shocking your dog. That's not, that's not what we're saying. But we, again, we appreciate both of you guys coming tonight. Cooler here, it's prevailing. And we'll just, you know, just keep chugging along and doing the best you can. And same to you, Mr. Kenny.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Now, at our last meeting, we were extremely well-intentioned and ambitious, and we took several votes in executive session and came out and announced them in open session. But we did not take the vote in open session. And that did not occur to me until I was driving home and I said, "Oh, well, that was an oversight." So, Ms. Green, the treasurer-collector contract, did you want to queue that up in terms of timeframes and some highlights of what that is? And then we will vote that in open session.
Yes, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, and members of the board. So, we have a contract that we have proposed to the treasurer-collector for who, her current contract expires June 30th, 2023 this year. We have a new agreement that she has reviewed, which is a for a six-month contract effective January, July 1 through December 31, at which time she intends to retire. On the contract, basically, it does increase the salary to $90,000, which was approved at town meeting. Basically, she is still eligible for benefits as far as sick time. She is going to be allotted 100 hours of vacation leave. And she also has five, five days of vacation, 35 hours of vacation leave that she is carrying over, that she was not able to take. The sick time as well, obviously, all the holidays.
And I think there's a proviso that she will help train.
Yes, so we will, we'll get the job description together and start advertising for the position. And hopefully, once someone comes in, she will, will basically onboard them to the job and bring them up to speed with the processes of Hanson and with the treasurer-collector's office.
So it's effective June 30th, 2023, for a six-month period?
Yes.
Ending...
December 31st.
Okay.
2023, yes.
Um, I, oh, I'm sorry. Anything else?
So, there basically is no provision in this contract for renewing. If unfortunately, her term comes to an, do not have anybody on, we do have an option maybe to invite her back on an annuitant type of position, which would limit her earnings because she would now be a retiree. But it, only if we need, we can continue our search for a new treasurer-collector. So that option is out there. Otherwise, there's no renewing on this contract here for past December 31.
Is that something that you'd like to see in there or...
Well, there was, there was a provision. There was two provisions that kind of canceled each other out. As far as the, the term for the non-renewal of the agreement, once December 31 happens, this agreement expires. And basically, there's no option in here for her to come back and say, "Oh, let's renew this for another six months." So, her intent is to move forward with retirement at that point.
Okay.
There was another provision in an earlier part of the contract that did talk about, basically, if, if this contract ran out and she was still in the position, what would take place. But we actually deleted that because it's confusing.
Okay. So, I will entertain a motion to allow Ms. Green to enter into a contract with our treasurer-collector effective June 30th, 2023, for a period to end December 31st, 2023, as we have reviewed and discussed in executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, great. And similarly, Ms. Green, may I prevail upon you to update us on the professional administrative union events coordinator?
So, as far as the, we are still working on the job descriptions. I do hope to have those hopefully next week. We're just, the holiday is right in the middle of the week, so hopefully have the two job descriptions. I believe there is agreement with the union on bringing in the events coordinator into the union. And basically, she would be brought in under the fee schedule of a grade one, step one employee.
Okay.
Which would take effect July 1 of 2023.
Okay. And the reason that we were able to justify that, because it's a, it's a, you know, a little bit of an increase, is the thought process that the newly-formed recreation committee is going to need some support, doing minutes and that type of thing, organizing agendas, posting agendas and all that. And we don't have anybody currently in the union that would have that as their job responsibility. So I will entertain a motion to place the events coordinator position as a, are we saying grade one?
It would be a grade one, step one.
Grade one, step one position.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And then, vote for vacation buyback. So, Mrs. Forte had requested as part of the union negotiations, had requested that she be allowed, because of the fact that she and Stacy have been laboring at great length to try to fill in for Gene Sullivan, who is out on medical leave, that she be allowed to buy back some vacation and to carry over some vacation beyond what would ordinarily be allowed. And given the fact that she would not be in this position, were it not for the fact that Gene was on medical leave, then she would have had the ability to take vacation, it seemed like the decent thing to do to allow her to do that. And the vote that we took in executive session, that I'm looking to duplicate in open session, is to allow Ms. Forte to buy back her vacation and carry over her vacation to the extent that Ms. Green is able to reconcile the amounts that are due to Mrs. Forte. So I'm looking for that motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. One-day liquor license, Jennifer Paul birthday party. I will entertain that motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Committee updates. Did anybody have any wild and crazy?
I just got one for the energy department.
Yes, please.
I haven't ever really talked much about them, but they do a lot of interesting work.
Good, good.
And those people just have so much information and knowledge in their head. One thing of note that I didn't realize was happening is they have Prism, Prism Energy is developing a plan for the installation of new HVAC heat pump system for the town hall. And they're planning on submitting a plan to get funding from the state in October.
Because it's energy efficient?
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Very energy efficient. And just the way they, they figure out how to make this all work. And I know they're working closely with Lisa. Just one more thing that Lisa's doing on getting this working, but they are working on, and it's a slow process. You know, they're going to start with one unit and then move this. If you look out here, there's like six or seven units.
I just have one question. Are they prioritizing this unit that we're currently suffering under right here? I'm joking.
I am not.
I joke.
I have to say, I have to say something about heat pumps. That makes me very nervous. Because heat pumps in Massachusetts have to have a backup system because they do not work when it gets very cold.
This, the company, the Prism company?
The new ones, are you sure they do?
Yeah.
The newer ones, the one, I mentioned...
Fantastic for air conditioning.
I mentioned the exact same thing.
The new ones will work if it's like 25, 30 below.
No, you're right, though. The early adopters, like the first issues of those.
The one they're going for is rated for 30 below.
30 below.
30 below.
The new ones will work at 30 below, yeah.
Yeah, I had the same, same exact question with my limited knowledge. That was one of the things. I'm like, well, you need a backup system. Like, no, the system's now working down to negative 30 degrees.
Because I like the geothermal stuff too, but that's, that's very expensive to install.
It's getting there.
It never ceases to amaze me, the variety of topics that we cover, all the way from dog training to heat pumps. All right, so, that's great. Thanks for the update.
Oh, if I may, just want to, just expand on this a little bit. So the grant fund is, it's green communities that we're going to be applying for the funding for the, for that type of a system. We, we, I'm sorry. We had the foam insulation installed in the attic of town hall as part of our weatherization program, which shows the state that we are preparing to upgrade our heating system. Green communities, though, they have stepped back with funding grants to replace HVAC systems with the same exact HVAC system. They're moving away from those fossil fuel type of systems. So the heat pumps are what they're focusing on for, for the grants. So that's what we'll be working with, with Prism. And actually, Jim Armstrong had started last year almost with the conversations of this type of heating system and working with Prism. And this gave them a much more, longer period of time to really look at the system and prepare a really good application for the new system. And also for green communities, speaking of that, also too, I don't know if they're still doing it. I have to look at when the next round comes out of what they're going to include. But in the past, they had included money if you purchased like hybrid police cruisers. So we'll also add that on to the application if possible.
I thought we adopted a bylaw in the back of my mind. I thought we adopted a bylaw saying, as part of the green communities thing, saying that prospectively, we would at least prioritize the purchase of hybrid vehicles.
Yes, yes.
But I, but, because somebody else was talking, it might have been Chief Mix when he gave his update. I remember thinking, I think we have to do that.
Yeah, so he has been, they've been purchasing it, but I think this will be the first year we are actually going to apply for green communities to get some money back towards the purchase of that.
That's great. That little stuff really adds up. I just had a quick little update. Economic Development Committee, we're sending out a letter to all of the businesses. Mr. DeFries has put together this list. We finally approved the letter. We had Nicole from Capital Strategic Planning take a look at it, just to make sure that like, you know, we weren't being ineffective in what we wanted to communicate. So that's going to be going out, basically telling people, "We've got an economic development committee and here's our email address. And if you're a small business and, you know, you're struggling or you need some help or you need somebody to help figure out, you know, what the regulations are, contact us. That's the first point of contact. And then we'll put you in touch with the appropriate town officials." And in keeping with that, one of the things that had come up at the strategic planning session, but it also has come up as part of the economic development, was the TIF, you know, revitalizing that TIF committee. So we had a meeting last week with some of the members, Lee Gamache, Don Ellis, Lisa, and I think maybe Eric was there too, talking about what, you know, how do we address the tax incentive piece? How do we identify what businesses could use help from us? Do we need to, like, kind of issue a statement in the newspaper that says, you know, "If you are interested in having the town work with you on, and you're, you're about to do a build out of a building and you're interested in deferring your taxes, you know, please apply with a letter of interest." Or whether we could think about businesses along that Main Street, the economic development area that we've, you know, that we, we voted to make that the economic development area. So any business in there, do we just target letters to them? Do we go and talk to them? How do we go about doing that? So Lisa's got some research to do on that. And once we get those pieces of information, I'll come back to you guys because obviously, we want the full board to kind of be, you know, in lockstep on, on what our approach is on that. But that's all I had on that. Anybody else have anything else? Okay, approve open, oh, did you?
No, oh.
Okay.
I just want, Lisa, are you going to address our trip to the...
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Approve open session minutes, May 30th, June 6th, and June 20th. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All right. And that brings us to Town Administrative Report. Ms. Green.
All right. Yes, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, and members of the board. So, last Thursday, myself and select board member Mrs. Rain and secretary commander Mr. George attended the North and South River Watershed Association site walk of the Indian Head River Luddens Ford Dam.
Luddens Ford site, yeah.
Which is located in Hanover and Pembroke, I believe. And then we went over to State Street here in Hanson and looked at that dam. So basically, the watershed, I'm just going to call them watershed, they had applied for a grant to do a feasibility study of both of those dams, to remove those dams with hopes of replenishing the fish habitats of the, that river. They had a member there, a gentleman by the name of John Mahoney, who is, he's a Plymouth Select Board member, who really gave a really great insight of how Plymouth went about this. They, I guess, they received some grants to remove some dams on one of their rivers. And he said that the restoration of the fish habitat has been incredible.
Really?
He said it had, removing the dams has done so much for that area that it's brought it right back to life. And he really, so strongly, he was really excited about this and said, you know, if this happens, because once they have the feasibility study done, they will then apply for another grant. And this is funded through the federal government, another grant to actually have the construction done. He really looks forward to the day that he can see what improvements have come about once these dams are removed. Because they really don't serve any purpose at this point.
Now, so, did you, was that, because I know you would have some concerns. Did it help you?
My concerns were addressed. The main thing, it's going to be interesting what happens at the State Street because of the way it's, the way it works. It's, it's got the one little flow that might be in Hanover. We're not sure about that.
Oh, boy.
But the town line is right up there, but it's only that little piece. The rest of it...
And that, that bridge was rebuilt in 1995.
Yes, yep.
And if they take away some of this granite at the base of it, I, I think there's going to have to be some. So I'd be very happy to see the State Street Bridge under construction again, because that was two blissful years of peace and quiet. But I'm sure the rest of the town is not going to be happy with having that bridge out again. Because it will, they will have to do something about the base of it, because it's going to be disturbed.
So you felt a little better about it, or?
Yeah, well, my, my big concern is upriver.
Yeah.
And coming from, starting from the ocean, going in, is the logical way to do it. You know, take the big one down in Pembroke, and then come up and do whatever you're going to, I don't, it flows up there. That's what I find kind of amazing. Down there, it doesn't flow. Up by us, yeah, there's a little wedge of water, but for the most part, that river flows all the time. But I don't know, they got to do what they got to do.
Okay.
I don't know that, I don't know that fish have ever come up that far to spawn. I think you're going to find them spawning a little bit more down river, closer to the fort site. That's where they, the herring were always there, and the, the shad, I mean, we used to shadfish down there. We never shadfished off my bridge.
And I saw you had somebody from Pembroke Select Board was there, and Hanover?
Yes, actually, I need to grab, Select Board, oh, Mr. Hill was with us. Yeah, so they had folks from Hanover, Pembroke, and Hanson. Only the Hanson people went to the State Street, though? Yes.
Interesting.
Yes, to, to take a little nature walk. Well, I think it's because, most of it is. Our conservation chair was there. It was in Hanson, I hate to say it. But our money isn't, we're, it's not going to be that expensive theoretically to do what they had to do at State Street for us to kick in. Pembroke's looking at, am I remembering $500,000 or something like that? Pembroke's looking at more money to have to kick.
That's Pembroke and Hanover, right?
Pembroke and Hanover, yes.
Yeah, so I was talking to the Pembroke Select Board, and I said, we should just vote no, Pembroke and Hanson, and have Hanover do the whole.
We could do that.
What could possibly go wrong with that?
No, not at all, nothing.
All right, thanks, sorry.
Yeah, it, no, that, it's good, it was really, it was, it was a very good walk, it was very informative. And we'll just look forward to see what, what this project will, will bring in the years to come. And then I know Chief O'Brien mentioned earlier that we had, we're at the McQuan this morning. We had the kickoff meeting with the company that's going to be demolishing the McQuan. This is, basically, this, it's going to be done in phases. So the first phase, they have to do the asbestos abatement, and that's the first phase, which will all be taking place within the building. They're actually going to start preparation next week for this. And we're going to be bringing in the engineer who will monitor and be a project manager for the asbestos abatement, because they have to file the certifications and be sure that it's properly removed and disposed of and things like that. So they will be on site. The company is great, Southern Middlesex Industries, also known as SMI. They're going to be fantastic to work with, they have a very good team. Myself was there, Chief O'Brien, Carrie Lass, the Building Inspector, Charlie Baker was with us. And we basically walked all around, we walked around the outside, heard what their plans are, you know, how they're going to space everything out. Chief Mix was not able to make it, but we're actually meeting again tomorrow at 11:30, so we can have Chief Mix in and the police and have them on board as well. We're going to keep everybody in the loop. They're going to communicate with us 100% along the way, so we'll start informing people about when things are going to happen. Unfortunately, at one point, the playground will most likely be shut down. Once they actually start taking down the building, it will be fenced around. But again, we'll, we'll let people know that as, as we move forward with the project.
And do they think they'll be done before school is open?
They're, they're, they're going to try.
Okay.
If, if not, they said it's, basically, they're not going to be doing a lot of pounding and things like that. It, it won't be, I asked that question. It should not be much of a distraction to the students at the Indian Head, because there are trees, buffers, and things like that.
I just think of traffic even already, like, it's crazy with the drop off.
Right, yeah, exactly. The asbestos removal, they anticipate that's going to be about six weeks, because they'll be in the building taking care of that. And then they will move to the, outside the building. So based, we had Charlie Baker do an inventory of all the contents within the school. This will become before the board next, for the next meeting. What the plan is to ask the board to deem this surplus, and then we can bring in, or we can auction the contents out. What SMI is going to do is they're going to collect the items, lockers, any desks, chairs, anything that's in there that Charlie takes inventory. They're going to move it to one area of the building, which pretty much I think is going to be the cafeteria, that's where the kitchen equipment is. They're going to tag it and move it all there. And then they're going to work on the other side of the building, until we can, we can get this surplus disposed of and, and bring in some money to the town. So this is going to be a really good project. I feel very good, everyone involved felt very good with this team that's in place. It's going to be a smooth transition, the McQuan's going to come down, and we don't anticipate any issues at all. They're, they're right on top of everything, and willing to work with us for any concern or any need that we have. So that was a very good meeting. Also, too, time has come to renew our insurance with Maya, so I completed all the applications for all the different insurances, our liability, our general, our vehicle fleet, things like that. So all that's done. Prelimarily, I hear that we're actually going to receive a 1% reduction in our premium, because we did a really good job last year, not a lot of claims.
Now, are we, and perhaps it's too late in this cycle, but maybe to think about it for next cycle, have we thought about a little competitive, you know, like, hey, can anybody do better than this type of thing for the same coverage? Because that's how we got this, was we were like, can anybody do better? And boy, could they do better.
It, it's going to be tough, because Maya specializes in municipal. I mean, we can go out to other companies, but I don't think they, they'd be able to offer us what Maya can offer us as far as grants.
We've got all town-owned buildings covered.
So the only building right now that's, that's still out there is the Bonny House.
And why is that?
Well, because of the condition of the building. They have not been able to find an underwriter, a company that will insure it, because of the condition of the building. But there is some, some forward movement on the Bonny House. So Dave Mansfield did come to me, we did contact National Grid to get that, the pole right there, I guess electrified, so that they could put a meter on it, and the electrician could do some work in that building. So that will show that some work is being done in that building.
I'm just nervous, because the Hanson Historic Commission is, like, they came to talk to the Economic Development Committee, because that's a site of interest for us. And, you know, and they're talking about making additional investments, right, in that property. And I just get nervous, like, if we're not covered, and they're going to go to the Community Preservation and ask for money, and, you know, they've already got materials on site that they're going to use for some of this work, I, I get very nervous, like, is this prudent for us to be moving forward with any of this stuff until we're insured?
Again, they, they have had trouble finding someone to insure in the building. And actually, the building with the prior company was never insured either. But it was something that we didn't know. I mean, we didn't know this wasn't insured yet.
No, I know, I know that that wasn't your failure, I get that.
They are still looking to try and find somebody that will insure the building, but now that we can show that this information is.
Is there like gap insurance we can get to throw something on there for now, until we, even if it's a little more expensive just to have it insured? I hate to hear.
But you know what I'm saying, like, it's like.
It scares me a lot. I'm going to say a little bit, but it scares me a lot.
Right, yeah. No, no, we, we know that that building is, is out there, and we're working to try and find somebody.
I, I like Mr. Hill's idea of gap insurance, or some, you know, even if it's not with the same company, is there something that we can get? I don't know.
I will work on it to see what we could do, definitely. Because that, that was an issue, and we were going to tell you, because we transitioned to the new company as of July 1, and they were still looking for someone to insure it. So we're working on that. And also, too, I would just like to welcome back Treasure Collector Jean Sullivan, who's been out on medical leave today, it was her first day back in the office. I, I hope she didn't work herself too hard, but we're very, very glad and happy to see her return. And we'll just make sure that she doesn't overdo it going forward. And also, too, our very first Hanson Happening Newsletter was released to, within town departments, had a lot of good information in it. And we do, we do plan on working with that to expand it to outside of Hanson.
It looked great.
But yeah, it was, I thought it was very good.
Did you guys all get a copy of this idea?
Yes, I did.
Yeah.
There's a lot of input into it, and I, I think it was very, very, very well done. So everybody is very, very, really engaged and.
I like the depth and breadth of the coverage, like, it was all kinds of different things.
Yeah.
Can, can this one be sent out more globally, or does it have to be?
Well, I asked Lisa that, and she said to me, and after she said it, it kind of made sense, she said, well, this was originally done more for like an internal, was sort of like a little inside baseball. But I, I think probably some pieces of it could definitely be leveraged for more of an outward-facing.
And we are going to work on that as well, for it to be distributed outside. But, you know, this is still new. That was our first one, where the information's already being, being collected for the July letter. So it may be steps, but it, it's happening.
It's a monthly letter?
Yes, yes, it'll be a monthly letter.
That's fine, I thought it was like a quarterly.
And also, too, the DOT has begun the work on the two areas in town that they're going to be repaving and, not regrading, but there's something else.
Millings or something.
Milling the roads, so people will notice that there's construction going on in those two areas. So that's started, which is a great thing. So we'll watch that. I know Highway has it on their website, we've put it on Facebook, so it, the information's out there. But just again, just to reiterate to people, expect delays, because that construction is happening. And that concludes my Town Administrative Report.
I just have one thing, I just, I didn't want to interrupt you, but how are they going to do this fire department training at the McQuan School? And tearing it down?
Well, no, what will happen is, the training is going to happen well before. And what, the training will happen in an area of the building that they're not working. Fortunately, the building is big enough so that they can train in one part of it, and asbestos removal can happen in the other. They're going to be putting up walls that will separate the rest of the building as they do the asbestos removal.
And we are insured on McQuan, right?
And McQuan is insured, yes, yes, it is, yes, it is.
And we've gotten quite a few questions about light control and the use of light control, and also of the McQuan property. And I just want to mention that everything that was discussed at that strategic planning session was just a discussion. No decisions have been made by anybody on this board about how either of those properties are going to be used. The ball is very much in play, and at a point at which we have some more facts about light control. And, and I understand that light control was cleaned up under DEP oversight. But what we don't know as a board is what is still there. We know there's some restrictions on the property. This board is not trying to get rid of the property, we're not trying to do anything other than to get educated about the property, so that we can make an intelligent decision about what to do with that property, and what to suggest to voters that we might want to do with that property. So no decisions have been made about that property or the McQuan property. These are discussions. And there is no doubt, again, to my earlier comment about things moving at a glacial pace. Nothing's going to be done overnight, it's going to require public forums, it's going to require meetings, it's going to require votes at town meeting. So rest assured that if either of those properties are something that are of particular interest to you, to see what's going to happen, sign up for our committees, because we've got openings. And we would very much like to have people engaged in that process.
And what's really important with light control is that light control is divided into two lots. There's Lot 1, which is actually behind the buildings, and a, you know, a little part. Lot 2 is in front of the buildings. So Lot 2 is, as you drive in, is what you see. The majority of the cleanup was centered around Lot 2, and a, a small portion of where the buildings are located. The, a lot of the questions, I think, in, that are surfacing are Lot 1, which is behind the other side, where the cell tower is. That is the lot in question, behind the building. So it's important, because it's not just one huge lot, it's Lot 1, Lot 2. And a lot of the documentation centers around Lot 2, which is in front.
And Lot 2 is the two buildings? Or there used to be three buildings?
That's probably off to the left of it, like.
Yeah.
Which one is the two buildings themselves?
So the, well, so the two buildings are mainly located in between Lot 1 and Lot 2.
So there are a lot that we don't know, you know what I mean?
No, there's a, there's a.
Or Lot 2?
Right, so the buildings, and actually, I mean, Mr. DeFray has the plans on this.
Can I just say, we're not posted for this?
No, no, we can definitely have this. The reason I mention this is because, you're right, we're not posted. I just, I want to have a discussion about this.
No, right, I get that. So can we just put this on a future agenda? Because I think it's important, because this is no more than a doodle on a napkin, so I don't want to spend any more time talking about something.
Correct, correct.
The more detail you get into it, the more it's going to create ironically more conversation.
Agreed, agreed. So I just wanted to make sure, is everybody agreed we'll have?
Thank you.
I don't think at the next meeting, because the next meeting, oh, just so everybody knows, our next agenda, at least this is what we're aiming for, is we're going to have the John Madden, who's doing our five-year, sort of like, here's your growth, here's what you guys can afford to spend. So actual planning of our budget. And then we're also going to have the Mark McAdams, the school, Nick Abrams, who is going to come, and he's going to talk to us about how we are the wealthier town, how that statutory method works.
That's at the next meeting.
That's at our next meeting. And so it's really educational for us, and it's meant to arm us with the facts, so that when we're going into budget season, we know everything we need to know to make the right decision. I don't know what those decisions are, but we'll have the facts.
That's July 11.
That's the July 11 meeting, yep.
So we can make plans till the 4th of July?
You can make plans for the 4th, yes, yes, you can.
Dave is very bitter about that meeting last year.
Absolutely.
I'm just going to say, you're taking bets, though.
Nope, we're not having any other meetings, that's it. Barring some weird emergency happening.
Not on the 4th of July.
But, no, no, not on 4th of July. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, we have, we have.
Yeah, we still got to open this.
Wage and personnel, don't forget.
Well, this meeting, right? Yeah, all right, all in favor? All right, great, thanks. Do you want me to enter the gamble?
No gamble.
Okay.
All right, we're going to get this done in 15 minutes.
All right.
15, make it 10.
We're going to call to order the wage and personnel meeting. The amended agenda done on Monday, June 26, 1:56. Tuesday, June 27, it's supposed to be at 7:45, we'll call it to order at 8:29. We've got four things on the agenda here. The first order of business is review and vote to approve part-time IT assistant position. Screen, if you want to just kind of walk us through some highlights.
So what we, so what we have is the job description.
Yep.
Okay, for that position. It just highlights that they will be assisting the IT director in maybe some troubleshooting, taking some inventory. So social media will definitely be a point for the position, to take the lead on, and also just assisting with any, anything that the IT director needs to be done. But since it is a wage and personnel position, it's important for the wage and personnel to adopt the job description.
Perfect. And everybody had this in their package prior, so does anybody have any questions on this?
Yeah, I'm, I'm nitpicky. I can't even find it right now, but somewhere in here it says Microsoft Exchanger, and it's, there's no R in Microsoft Exchanger. Just, just for, to make a note to the IT director.
We can fix that.
Any other questions or comments or anything? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the part-time IT assistant position as presented with the typos being.
So moved. I never get to make motions, so.
You got to do it quick. All right, all those in favor?
All right.
All right, 5-0. Then we have review and vote to approve part-time Select Board Administrative Assistant Position. Screen, if you want to walk us through that one.
Yes, so this is the job description for the part-time, the part-time assistant position in the Select Board's office. So it's been a long time coming, but this is the job description, that it will include all of the duties and responsibilities for that position, which will include attending some of the meetings, attending executive session meetings, assisting, assisting with drafting minutes, working with the personnel files. And it's, we just really think that this is a really good job description, it's very thorough, and it will allow the person to do what they need to do within the time allotted for the position. And also, social media will be a big factor for this position as well.
Fantastic, any other, any questions from anybody? All right, I'll entertain a motion. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the part-time Select Board Administrative Assistant Position.
So moved, second.
All right, all those in favor? All right, perfect. And then, discuss and vote, and for both of those things, they were voted on at town meeting, everything's good to go, everybody's.
Yes.
Yeah, so this is already approved, these are just.
It's already approved, right, we just needed the job descriptions adopted by the wage of personnel.
And we got discuss and vote for executive assistant vacation, buyback, and rollover.
So, our executive assistant has asked if she is, would be able to buy back or wanted to carry over five days vacation. It's, it's in the union contracts that allows the union members, you want to buy back 10 days?
Roll over 10.
You want to roll over 10 days?
Roll over 10 and buy back 5?
No, just roll, I'm sorry. She would like to carry over 10 days, she has not been able to take any time off.
And you think you're going to be able to take time off later on? Well, that's, that's why we already voted to, to approve a part-time Select Board.
Okay, got it.
Do you want us to take the time, or try to?
Let's schedule some, yes.
Okay, schedule, there you go.
That's good, what's your recommendation on this?
Definitely, yes. I, I don't see any reason why, where we allow basically every other town employee to do it, I wouldn't see why we would not offer her, afford her the same benefit. She has the time planned, she's going to be taking it, so absolutely, yes.
All right, all right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the buyback rollover for the executive assistant.
Of two weeks, so moved, second.
All right, all those in favor? Good, and then we have approve May 30th, 2023, meeting minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved, second.
All right, all those in favor? Here we go, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
All right, all those in favor? All right, we are adjourned.
I think I, there was typo.